In the planning commission meeting, and I hope you had a nice lunch. And we are going to be moving on to land use. This is the description of the general plan land use categories. The density and intensity of use, the general distribution, and the location of uses. Okay. So I was just mentioning one of the, I'm jumping ahead because I did have something in the description above. But on all of these, at least most of them, the third, the last column where it says, "The purpose of this designation is to identify." It just seems to me that would be cleaner. Mr. Tuno's joined us?
Thank you.
That's all right.
Fastest hamburger I ever ate.
So if we just got rid of the purpose of, and we just said, "This designation identifies," then that would, you know, carry through for all of them. That's one suggestion I had. Are you guys following me?
No.
Okay. So on the last column. And it's, so instead of saying the purpose of, you know, since we pretty much know the purpose, is if we just said, and this applies to a lot of these categories, it's just we said, "This designation identifies."
You mean make that a universal change?
Yes, yes.
Sure.
A universal change. I think it's just cleaner.
And before you go beyond that law-
I'm not going to go beyond. I did, I did jump. Do you have some comments on the first paragraph?
No, the second one.
Oh, do you have a comment on the first paragraph before we get to the table?
The introductory paragraph?
Yes.
That paragraph. No, okay, go ahead.
Okay. I only had one, and again, it's very small, but we're, you know, it's, I don't know, fourth, maybe seconds, maybe it's the last sentence, where it says, "These areas are intended to." And this, I have a comment probably on several other areas. It's like, I don't know, do we have to state our intention? Why can't we just say, "These areas identify"?
I agree with that.
No problem here.
If we're on that paragraph, that's a reference to a land use diagram that identifies areas of the county as a community area. Do we have that? Because I don't think I can find it anywhere.
It wasn't included in here. It was the, it's the map, the land use map.
Which we haven't got yet.
Which we haven't, I mean, it was included in the original draft, and we haven't got to that change yet. So just to say printing costs, I didn't reprint that map. You really can't read it anyway at that scale.
Right.
So when we get into the map. But that land use diagram, I think, fits in just before this table or just after the table. I can't remember where it sits in the document.
Any other comments on this page?
Yes.
Okay.
On RP, on the description section, item number two, "To maintain the land's viability and economic productivity," again, it's the purpose, "maintaining the viability and economic productivity and protection of the lands from intrusion, et cetera, incompatible uses." To me, that's a, that's a statement that's more appropriate in the policy section, to the extent that we want to keep that kind of language. It's not a description of the, of the land use. It's a description of what we want to do about that land use, how we want to treat that land use. So when I went through it, I made note of all, all of those issues that I thought were really policy statements in that section, which I didn't think they belonged.
So how does that compare to the one above, where we're talking about manage for timber and watershed and water quality and groundwater recharge?
Just a minute, let me catch up to you.
Okay. I'm just, I'm trying to get where your, the distinction between-
Are you talking about the sentence above that starts with typically, typical?
I'm talking about the difference between, between RM, the description of RM and RP. How is-
Okay. Look at the first one, the one that you mentioned.
Okay.
"The purpose of this designation," or in your words-
Right.
"-this designation is to identify public and quasi-public lands that are managed for timber, watershed, water quality protection, and groundwater recharge." Okay, fine. That's a description, as this column is intended to be, a description of what RM is. Whereas the sentence that I'm pointing out in the next section below, RP, item number two and three, are policy statements directed toward the RP land designation. They are not descriptions of it. Follow me?
I do.
Okay. So I think I was consistent when I went through it, knocking some of those out, and knocked, I meant, I meant to address all of them where I thought it was a, a policy statement. For example, and I would jump ahead to RR.
Well, let's just, what, Peter, do you have a thought on why, I mean, there is a difference, obviously?
My, but what I was going to say is that I think, when I submitted my, my suggested edits, I think Peter picked up on, on some of those and did indeed cross them out. I just happened to notice that was still in there.
Yeah. I think it's probably a good idea to remove policy language from the description, and if it's appropriate policy, add it to a, you know, recraft that phrase into an actual policy statement.
And I have no problem with it as a policy statement, just belonging somewhere else. In fact, the policy state, a lot of people go through the general plan, they just look at those policy statements. This is kind of the fine print, and we shouldn't lose it here if we really want to talk about doing that. Let's stick it as its policy.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, I, I like the sentiment, certainly, but it's, if we're going to be consistent, and this is simply a description, then it should go someplace else.
So I don't have anything further for a couple pages.
Well, I have a question, why the language at the bottom of page LU four and top of page LU five on resource production was stricken? You know, where it says, "Resource production lands have the capability of being utilized for several resource production uses and/or compatible activities," and it goes on. What was the reason for striking that language?
I think the same thing as Commissioner Tuno just suggested, that that was really more of policy language than simply an identifier. The, the capability statement could, could stay in there. I think that sort of, it could go either way. Reference to the zoning code really should be either a policy or implementation measure if that's something that we wanted to retain in some way.
I took this as being descriptive rather than policy statements. It's not a statement of purpose, it's a statement of what these things are capable of.
I'm good with leaving that in.
I don't see it as a policy statement at all. I see it as a descriptor.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll keep that sentence. I think the sentence of the zoning code doesn't belong anywhere else.
Right, I agree.
I had the same comment on all of that, on the resource production. I mean, a number of things were stricken that, that explain or expand upon what can be done. Not that that's the purpose of it, but they are descriptive as what the designation permits. For example, it skews, it includes EG production and processing facilities, farm stands, tasting rooms, as activities that are permitted under the RP rubric. And I don't know why that's not helpful, it gives people an idea of what you can do.
I agree, as long as it's a descriptor, and a little detail there is well taken. And for example, you might not have thought that resource production would include tasting rooms, but it's, by putting it in there, it shows a person, it shows the reader it is part of that. Yeah?
Good. Moving on?
Under rural transition, RTA, at the bottom of page LU five, it says, as amended by FON, it would read, "This designation recognizes areas of existing rural neighborhoods." And is the implication that there can be no new RTA areas designated?
I don't think that it would certainly prohibit creation of any new ones, but it, it's primarily based on where those existing land use patterns are. And I think that probably gets to the fundamental question that we were discussing this morning, too.
I don't see it as a restriction.
We could say-
I think, I think it's fine, but just again, this designation recognizes existing rural neighborhoods, period.
That's how I see it.
Identifies.
Sure, identifies, yeah. Existing rural neighborhoods, period.
Are we on the next page, then?
We are.
On six?
Uh huh.
Okay. I have a comment about water and sewer. The word individual were stricken. And I'm wondering, does that mean that, and I'll talk about, like I said, water and sewer, does this mean that a, a small development, let's say it's 10 homes that are built on a, some, kind of a mini subdivision, can they have a shared well arrangement? Can they have, with respect to septic, could they have their own sewage treatment, privately owned sewage treatment plant, operating under the auspices of whatever the regulations are that govern such plants? Does this allow for that?
Yes, it could. The, the reality of trying to create something like that is pretty small. The standards, the state standards for water systems, small water systems, and onsite sewage treatment systems for multiple parcels is a pretty high bar.
I, I can believe that.
The reason I struck individual, it was redundant, in my mind.
That's what I thought you did, but I just wondered if-
But it's possible.
With respect to water, it's pretty common for a well to be shared by more than one parcel. Okay? So that was one issue. With respect to the septic, now, I don't know if it'll happen in the 20-year lifespan of this general plan, but I see it coming where the technology will exist to create septic processing systems that are, you know, sewage in, purple water out, kind of systems that will allow development where there was never allowed before, where the soil doesn't perk, and there's no, too far from a sewer line, and that sort of thing. I just see it, I see it coming, and I would like for us not to preclude its possibility.
What you're talking about is really more of a, you know, small treatment system.
Yes.
It's not just simply putting that fluid into the ground and letting the ground do the treatment-
Correct.
-percolation in.
Close the system.
Yeah. So that certainly is something that could be considered with any development.
And these, RGP, they would not preclude that. In other words, someone comes forward and says, "I would like to have a shared well with these four houses." We're not going to say, "Oh, sorry, RGP precludes that."
I don't believe it does. I'd have to go back and look very closely at all, all the policies relating to public water, public sewer, and see if there's language in there that could be interpreted that way.
Okay.
But I, I don't believe that if someone proposes a small wa, essentially what you're talking about is a small water system. Anything that serves more than one residence is a small water system.
Okay, you're talking septic now, as opposed to-
Well, I'm talking water.
Yeah.
And so-
A small water system includes two or three houses sharing a well.
Right, right. And that has to be tested, it has to be certified by the state, it has to go through quite a rigorous process to be more than your own individual well. And I believe the same applies for a sewage treatment system.
You could have up to about four before you became a purveyor or something, and-
Well, there's, there's a-
And all that testing and all that.
There, there are different levels.
Yeah.
But you still have to meet certain, I mean, even just a, a commercial use of a well, or an institutional use of a well, has to meet a much higher standard of, than your own personal well. If someone were to propose a project that utilized a system like that, we could consider it, and we'd have to go through, you know, the review process to ensure that that, you know, meets the standards and actually going to provide a long-term, secure source of water for that development. And same way with sewage treatment. The biggest concern is long-term maintenance of a system like that. It's one thing to say, "Oh, the homeowners will take care of it," and it's fine while it's, while it's working properly, but then suddenly, each homeowner gets assessed, you know, tens of thousands of dollars because they need to do a major replacement or something, and everyone backs. And I've seen, you know, all kinds of projects over the years, just let systems fail, and the county ends up having to come in and bail them out. We don't want that.
No, we don't want the county bailing people out, when the county shouldn't be bailing anybody out of their-
But the reality is, if they don't, they're, you know, putting effluent into the stream or, you know, contaminating downstream properties.
Oh, then that's totally diff, that's, that's code enforcement, right?
Right, but if there's no entity that is responsible for maintaining that system properly, then who do you go after?
Oh.
So that wouldn't apply to where I know there's several houses on one septic up in-
There may be existing situations where that, that's, but that probably wouldn't be allowed today.
So what would they do about a repair?
I don't know.
If it failed, and you've got five houses on one system, and they're willing to fix that-
Who's, who operates the system?
The owners. It's a private septic system. They have one septic, five houses, because it's lava cap.
You know, I'd have to talk to environmental management about that. I don't, I don't know what, you know, who's responsible in that case.
We start putting leans on people's property, or something like that, right?
Again, I don't know. I don't know the answer.
So if someone came to you and they're building two homes, they could not be on one septic system today?
I don't believe so. I could be wrong, I don't believe so.
Remember, never to sell one of those houses.
It's based on capacity of the septic system. It could be a three, four, five bedroom.
However, it's engineered.
So if you have a three-bedroom house and a two-bedroom house, then it has the capacity for it. That would be an environmental issue.
But, but what Lisa's talking about is, is multiple residences sharing a single system, and I, I don't believe that's permitted today.
Okay.
Without some type of entity that maintains that.
And that's a state guideline, or our county?
I believe it's a combination of both.
Okay, well, okay, but I can see, I can see the utility of such an arrangement. If you had a parcel of land, and you had it divided into, let's say there's six legal parcels, and most of it is, let's say, it's too rocky, or there's a bunch of trees, or something like that, and you can't put in a, a septic system, but part of it is a, is a nice, perfectly good leach field area. And if you, if everybody shared, it works just fine under this, this arrangement. But you're saying, "We don't allow that."
I think that at the time that the subdivision that creates those lots were to be approved, we would have to look very closely on how the long-term maintenance of that system-
Right.
-is going to be done, and who's the responsible entity.
Through an HOA or something, or a-
Yeah, and, and I would be very reluctant to rely on an HOA-
Yeah. Well, of course, Meadows is that way, too.
I mean, there are a lot of stuff like that out there today.
Right.
There's no question about that. But the history of those kinds of things, over time, has, you know, has created problems, and I think some of the state rules, as well as, you know, possibly our local rules.
So that doesn't play a role in what-
But I don't think the general plan necessarily-
Right.
...addresses that. What we're saying is that, you know, at certain densities, we want you to connect to public sewer.
Right.
We don't want you to come up with, you know, or to rely on, on septic systems for that. It's too dense of a, of an application to rely on septic systems.
So, are you guys, can we move on?
I'm done with that whole section.
Okay. So I had a suggestion on the RTB.
RT what?
TB, the one, so-
It's like the one down on-
Yes, I see.
Yeah. Is it, you use basically the same language with the RTA, so like, this land use designation identifies existing rural neighborhoods, but on a smaller scale than RTA, period. I don't know if it allows all those other, you know, berry farms and stuff, but if it doesn't, just leave it, you know, so it's, the language is consistent between RTA?
Well, it's-
Versus like this category?
I just struck it because, you know, since it was, the purpose was the same as the RTA, I didn't feel it was necessary to repeat all of that.
Oh, I'm not suggesting you add the language back in. That was all the strikeout?
Right.
No, 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 I'm just saying, no, no, I'm just saying, instead of saying, "This category has," it's just, keep it consistent and say, however we say, "That this designation identifies existing rural neighborhoods, but on a smaller scale than RTA," period. Just period.
Or you could just say, "This category is similar to RTA, but on a smaller scale."
Fine, something. I don't, I don't think it recognizes historical rural residential subdivisions as, as needed.
Wait a minute.
Why?
Is it supposed to?
Well, then, yeah, I mean, well, then why wouldn't we have it under RTA, too? I mean, the categories are, if they're supposed to be the same, I think the language should be the same. So- Just one's smaller, and one allows, you know, more uses, like they're- But I wouldn't want to strike out, "It recognizes historical rural residential Why would you strike that? Well, then I, then I would add it to the RTA, too. It's doing the same thing, right? Well, I don't know, does RTA recognize historical, and should the language on the first sentence be the only thing changed? I don't mean to make this a big deal, but- No, it's a great thing that you brought up. It was just more of consistency of language, since these, these two land use designations are, they're practically identical, except for the size. It seems to me that the language describing them should be a practically identical, except for the size. That's all, that's my point. Except for if we, I think, I think deleting the word "historical residential," if that, if that is in the RTB, but it's not in the RTA, we need to acknowledge that fact. By striking it, then we are completely striking that out of our general plan here. No, just a description. But it seems to me that they're both, they're probably both historical subdivisions, so I, and that's fine, but add historical subdivisions to RTA.
I would concur with that.
Yeah, something. Okay. So you would just take and add the historical to the RTA? Well, and then just to make the language the same, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Instead of saying, "This category," you know, just make it- I'm good with that. Okay. I just don't want the word struck. Okay. Well, we'll add it to the other one. So I just have a question on the rural residential. So if you've got a one-acre parcel on septic, so you can have two houses on a one-acre parcel with a septic tank, right?
Are you talking about a residence?
No, it says one dwelling.
Well, one dwelling-
And an accessory dwelling. You can have an accessory.
You can always have an accessory dwelling.
That's-
But under state law, that's considered a one dwelling.
Okay.
For density purposes.
An accessory dwelling may or may not be attached.
So, but they can have, you can have two systems on the one acre, right? I mean, you have, I mean, you have to.
You, you, you could, or you could design it so that both units-
Use their own.
Use the same system, or they could be separate systems.
And if there were some reason that the accessory dwelling couldn't, let's say that the land was not capable of perking another septic system-
Then you couldn't-
Then you couldn't build the, you couldn't have the additional dwelling unit.
Right.
Okay.
We have to develop some type of engineered system or something there.
Okay.
Because, as I pointed out, it's based on the, the size of the unit, how many bedrooms-
Right.
-potential bedrooms. And so if you've got three in the main house and two in the accessory dwelling, you're total of five. Whether that's one individual system or two separate systems, it doesn't really matter.
Right.
You know, on a large parcel, in, with the unit separated, you probably have two separate systems. If they're close together on a, you know, then, really depends on the situation.
Okay. I was just wondering. All right, others? Moving on? Well, I had a question on CCH.
Before we get there, I had a question that I had posed about RMD and RHD. I think I put that in the staff report, about whether or not it really makes sense to differentiate at the general plan level, high and median density residential development, which is, the only, the difference is the, the density, six to 12 units versus 12 to 20 units per acre. I mean, they're both basically multifamily type of densities.
I'm sorry, where in the-
It's on page-
The very bottom of page six, atop of page seven.
No, I mean, in your staff. Where was that note that you were just mentioning?
You know, and maybe it was something I intended to mention, but I never-
Well, you did mention about the community historic and stuff. I don't believe I remember seeing it either.
Maybe it was something, you know, it was something I was thinking of-
I was doing Mark de Malle, I remember that.
I was, I was debating whether or not it was something that, that should be, be brought up.
Mr. Wooster's pointing it up under land use descriptions, second bullet point.
Well, that's between the-
That's coming up.
-the next, the next category, under the mixed use.
Right.
But I sort of had the same question.
Okay, go ahead.
And I guess I decided that maybe it makes sense to leave that. But I guess I'm still, it's still an internal debate I'm having, whether or not we should have two categories of, of multifamily housing, essentially.
So is it basically one last category to keep track of? Is that-
Well, it would be, and it could be, you know, divided by zoning.
Right.
You know, as, as you get more into the more precision of the, the application to individual parcels, you could have different zoning that would delineate the densities.
The only thing I would say is that people looking just at the general plan map without looking at the zoning, I mean, it, it tells a, a much, you get a lot more information having them separate.
You're talking about RMD and RHD, right?
Right, right.
High density and medium density. Peter's suggesting that, or just asking our opinion if they should be collapsed as, into one designation that would just be maybe medium slash high density or something.
Well, I kind of had the same view, but I dropped it, of, of some of the, the way we parsed out the, some of the rural designations, where it was up to, you know, five acres, and then it's one to five, and it's five to 10, and then it's 10 to 20. I thought that was too many, but I just sort of let it go. But I don't have any problem with collapsing those designations, and then dealing with it in zoning is, is, is-
It's just an option, and, and I don't know whether it's, you know, at this point in time in the process, should we make those kinds of changes? Or, or is it something that is important?
Well, I think you're kind of changing horses in the middle of the stream here, too, because we have a map that's going to show this, and we've already got people has looked, they've looked at maps, and they've looked at these categories, and then all of a sudden their, their category disappeared.
Right.
You know, I think it's, I think we're, it's kind of a can of worms, and personally, I, I think having these, I mean, it's a lot less than the hundred we had before. And somebody looking at the general plan map is going to get a lot more information about their neighborhood and kind of what's planned around them versus just one that says residential. I mean, there's a big difference between density for a single family and for, you know, multiple families. So I think it's important to keep these distinctions in the land use designation.
It's a different color on the map, right?
Yeah, totally different.
I would say, "Leave it alone."
Okay.
So I had a question on CCH. It says, "Public water," and then it says, "Public sewer, except as otherwise provided pursuant to general plan policy PF dot two six." What is that?
As I recall, that basically says it where there, you have- As I recall, that basically says it where there, you have existing communities that don't have public sewer. There's a number of communities, you know, in the county that don't have public sewer.
I see.
You can still develop that as long as you can meet the sewer disposal requirements for onsite settlement.
Okay, so it's kind of acknowledging existing.
Yes.
Conditions.
Yes.
Okay.
Where we have public sewer available here in the town of San Andreas or, you know, the other established communities, then we want to make sure that they, you know, commercial development connects to public sewer. But where it's not available, we don't want to have to, you know, okay, you can't develop until you develop a, you know, a sewer system for the whole community.
Right.
You know, just kill any development at all. So in those communities where public sewer is just simply not available, then as long as you can meet the health, safety requirements.
You can continue on.
Then you can continue, and we can allow commercial development. That was the intent. I can look up public facilities two point.
Six.
Six.
And that's referenced in some of the other designations too. Okay. Moving on. I had a question on industrial. Now I'm trying to read my notes, hold on. Never mind.
I would like to go back to the discussion of maybe collapsing the mixed use designations a little bit though.
Okay.
I think the historic community center sort of needs a standalone that, that whether or not we need to differentiate between the local community center and regional community center.
I'm sorry, which one did you go to? We're back to mixed use.
Bottom page seven, last two at the bottom there.
I don't, I, again, I, I mean, that one to me is not so problematic. I definitely think the historic one is, is needed, because it is sort of accommodating a whole different sort of.
It is.
Land, land use scenario. I mean, I don't have a problem with the only, the only issue I would have with it, again, is that we have a map that we have shown to a lot of people in a lot of community meetings, and these, these designations show up on colors on that map, and they're, and they're in their mind, and they come back and it's gone, or it's been collapsed.
I think in this case that the uses are pretty broad within these two categories. The only difference really is the, the density that would be permitted between the local and the regional. I would suggest that we provide for up to 20. And the reason for that is that allows us then to continue to try to meet our RENA allocation requirements under the housing element. The regional housing, housing needs assessment allocations that we get every five years, that we have to provide sufficient land planned and zoned for densities.
You're saying on CCH, change it to up to 20?
No.
On CCL.
And CCR.
And the, the, the land itself is actually, so I, I would actually either rename it, eliminate one of those, and just make it all one community center, local or regional, with an up to 20 designation.
But you're cutting back the number of persons.
No, he's, he would.
Right now, it's up to 12.
Use the higher threshold of up to 20.
Rather than the.
He might call it something else, but you'd get rid of the middle column. Row.
Oh, you're talking acres, not people?
Right.
Yeah.
Well, it's dwelling units per acre.
Right.
So rather than 12 dwelling units per acre, the standard would be up to 20.
On that, on CCL, I got that.
Well, you'd get, probably get rid of CCL, and you'd have, and you'd just keep CCR.
Okay.
But you might call it something other than CCR.
Well, I, I think there's quite a distinction between CCL and CCR, and there's obvious distinction between those two and CCH.
Right.
Right, there's things that you, you.
I'm not suggesting we eliminate CCH. I think that should be standalone, keep it the way it is.
Whereas a CCR, when you're talking about community center, regional, now you're talking about typical uses include shopping centers, et cetera. Okay, so that's a shopping center that doesn't just serve, let's say Valley Springs, that's a shopping center that serves a wider area, so.
Hence the name, yes.
So it's sized accordingly. So, so I see that as a lot different than CCL, a local thing, which might be, what, a strip mall? A nice looking strip mall?
Well, just any kind of retail, commercial use.
Okay, but I mean, isn't that a, isn't that a major distinction? It's a scale issue, it's a pretty, pretty big deal.
My question would be this, if you merge those two, or delete one and just keep one, and just do the up two, are we going to lose the identification of a smaller center local? And, because the uses, when you read through this, are different from each other. Because in the CCL center, the local, community center local, the business associated with the CCR, residential uses typically include live work units, second floor residential. And I know in Copropolis, they did something similar to that, where they put apartment spaces up above their shopping centers, and I know in Arnold, we have a similar situation.
I, I guess my, my thought on this, and I, the reason I bring it up here, because I really wasn't certain, rather than making the changes, here's what I'm recommending, I'm just, I want to open the debate and the discussion on this issue.
You did.
Is, is that the community plans will more precisely dictate the, this type of developments going on, and that the general plan sort of, again, retains that more generality of, we want mixed uses here, they can be commercial, they can be residential, they're going to fit the community because of the various policies we have and whatever comes out of the community plans. But we don't need two different designations for that same essential use. I'm not sure about that, I'm just.
But not all areas have community plans that are going to be incorporated into the general plan, so that leaves a big hole. Until they're updated and added later. So that won't be addressed there. I, I see a big difference, difference between these two.
And if, if you're kind of ambivalent and bullish about it, I mean, I think that I'm hearing, you know, we'd like to keep them the way they are, right? So let's just keep them the way they are.
With the change that you made on 20, from 12 to 20, which gives, gives you the ability to, to plug that into the housing element in terms of available numbers, right?
Well, we keep them all the same now, because on, right?
If we did that, there would really be, I mean, other than this language, which are, again, sort of, these are typical uses, but the size and scale of the commercial development is not regulated by this language. It's going to be by the zoning, it's going to be by other policies and standards that are in place. And so the only, the only standard that is established here is that density designation. This sort of describes what we sort of had in mind of the kinds of uses that would be here, but these aren't, this is not a sort of a mandate, only these kinds of uses can go there, they can only go here and not there. The idea is that, you know, a regional center might have larger scale commercial, perhaps higher density development than a more localized one. And my thought was that, well, the, the community itself and the, the needs of that community in the market are going to more, more dictate what kind of development is going to happen there. You know, if someone wanted to put an 18 unit, 18 units per acre multifamily housing complex in some community, regardless if it's whether a local community or a residential community, should we restrict that because we decide that's local versus that's regional? If someone wanted to put in a larger scale commercial development in one community or another, should we be differentiating which communities those go? That's the question that I have.
So.
And, and, you know, I, I sort of, I inherited these land use designations, and I didn't spend a lot of time in preparing the draft to say, well, are, do these really make a lot of sense?
So.
But as I, you know, reviewed this further and looked at the comments, it just, it was an issue, a question that I, I came to, you know, my own personal, you know, thoughts on it, does it make sense to differentiate this way? And for us to say, you know, McCallum Hill is going to be local, San Andreas is going to be regional, Murphy's is going to be, you know, something else, I, I don't know. I just don't know.
So if you merged these two, would you, just, just throwing this out there, would you keep the language about residential could also be included in those communities? Would you merge that?
Oh, yes, and the intent is that residential is supposed to be still, you know, could be either or a mix of residential or commercial.
So right now, as it reads, it's not that in the CCR, but it is in the CCL. So if we merged those, then that would exist to both uses?
Oh, that's true, it's not in there, it should be.
So I think, I mean, if you were going to merge it and allow that to happen up to the 47.8 acres. I would like that.
I would revise the language, I mean, clearly we allow up to 20 dwelling units an acre, you know, by the building intensity standard, so even though it doesn't say it in the description, residential development's allowed in the CCR.
But it should stay in the description.
It should say that.
But it, yeah, I would, I would want it to be in there. If you were, if you were going to merge those two with the.
And I would merge the two language in some way that.
But isn't it, isn't it true that the residential uses allowed are, are associated with a commercial structure of some kind?
They don't have to be.
They could be separate.
You could have separate.
Well, small scale, commercial uses, the purposes of this designation is to provide for a mix of residential and small scale, so it could be both.
Right.
But not necessarily conjoint.
Just like, I think someone was talking earlier, that, you know, the historic pattern of our communities, you've got houses next to businesses, and they all sort of blend together, and it, it provides that mixed use that historically has been the context of, of our communities.
So when you're talking about, because I know Fawn's concern is, okay, if you make that one, throw one out, and you put the descriptions together, she's concerned about the maps, but don't you think the maps are going to be updated and we're going to have another public comment period when we come out of CEQA and environmental review anyway, right?
Well.
Oh, yeah.
The reality is, is that there's probably not that much of this designation on the maps anyway.
There's actually quite a bit.
Yeah, there is.
Would you, would you agree that then, if you merge these two, CCL and CCR, you keep the language so that the, all the accommodations are the same, then what you're really saying is that the map itself, whatever the parcels are designated, however big they are or appropriate they are, is going to determine whether or not it's really, becomes a local community center development or something on a bigger scale. It's going to be determined not by, not by zoning there, but by the size of the parcel and the location of the parcel.
Right, I mean, it's, it's all, that's one of the factors that will go into it.
In fact, a development could even be, I think most of them are, they're really a combination of those things.
Yes, exactly.
Where if you've got a lumberyard in that development, or a big hardware store, it's serving a, a wide, it, it's a regional. Component, if people are coming from all over to get there.
Centers, centers market up in Mountain Ranch is essentially a regional for, I mean, it's, it's not regional when you think about the market descriptions of, you know, what, what a real estate agent, a commercial real estate agent calls a regional, you know, regional center versus a local center, but for Calaveras County's perspective.
That's reasonable.
It serves a.
Drawing from Amador.
You know, all over the area.
Let me give a different example, in Valley Springs, you've got Marvals and CVS. Those two are regional, right?
From a county's perspective, yes. They're local for, for most, you know, commercial real estate.
But not the, not the post office, and not the thrift store that's in there, and not the pizza parlor and whatnot. Those are strictly local.
Right.
So it's a mixture of uses.
It is a mix, yes.
And, and so even if you have a, a regional center, a big scale center, it's got a lot, a, a, a big part of it is also, is only going to be of interest to locals, used by locals.
I say bring those two together, that's my opinion. Make it one.
Well, we'll hear what the public has to say, and then we'll come back to this.
That adds a degree of flexibility to the plan, and, and allows the, allows the parcel and the marketplace and the, to, to determine whether that's going to be small scale, big scale.
Right. Okay.
Any other comments on this?
No.
On the table?
No.
So let me just ask you, just so to like move along, has anybody had a lot of comments on 1.2 relationship to other plans and documents?
I have none.
Because if we could include that in the, and do, if we don't have any, we can have that be part of our next public comment period.
You talking about the one with the other plans and documents?
It's the page following the table.
Right. Which would include, you know, the relationship of the general plan to the zoning ordinance.
Right.
So is, any comments on those?
No.
Because that's sort of a natural break before we get into.
I had, I was fine with those.
Okay. So are you, shall we open the public room?
So are you saying then that the commission is, is through with 1.2, we're going to go, we're going to have public opinion, a couple of comments on everything up through?
Well, we're going to focus on, not going back, but on land uses, and then, so it's going to be 1.1.
Up to the goals and policies.
Up to the goals and policies.
Up to goals and policies, correct.
There we go. Okay, so anyone out there like to comment on land use designations and relationships to other documents, or something you missed saying from this morning?
Al Segal and Taxpayer Association.
I'm going to keep you to five minutes too, I'm just, I forgot to mention that beforehand, so thank you, Al.
That's okay.
It's not just you, Al.
I won't, I won't need five minutes, and I appreciate the, the good work you're doing, as well as the other commissioners. The, the two things that, that you talked about, one was you discussed alternative septic systems, water systems. I think the wording should allow a review and approval of alternative systems. No, don't force in just a septic drain field system, allow, they even have combustible toilets that, that don't use water. In Europe, there's all kinds of different systems that are, that are working, that are engineered, so as, as science evolves, we don't want our general plan to be so narrow as to exclude things that will work for the property owner, and that's because you respect the rights of the property owner. Second area of general discussion is as we move into community plans, the same protections that you're providing for the property owner and the marketplace should also apply in the community plans. So that, that moves away from the community being a mini dictatorship of uses to more suggested uses that they think at particular time would work well. If it has the built-in flexibility, as the general plan ought to do, then it will not hurt that community's growth and its local economy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Colleen Platt with myvalleysprings.com. Been a free-ranging discussion, so excuse me while I try to back up to where I might have some comments. I guess I have a question, a couple of questions. Back to the table, land use designation table, page LU six, under RR designation. Under the building intensity column, we have one to five acres as the range of parcel size allowed, I'm understanding that to be. In this area, in Calaveras County, there's a lot of existing RR parcels that, some of them are actually even lower and higher than that range, and I think that's been clarified that existing parcels that are less than one acre or greater than five, but are designated RR are still fine that way.
That's correct.
Right. So then that gets to the second part of my question. So I'm interpreting this to mean that a parcel that is greater than one acre in size can be further subdivided then into one acre parcel sizes under this designation as RR. So I'm interpreting this, I'm just asking that question then. I'm just asking that question then. If this says one to five acres and you have a three-acre parcel, or you have a five acre, or you have a 10 acre and they're designated RR, if it has public water, which that's the requirement here, but it's on septic, or it doesn't have anything, you can allow, you can then further subdivide it. For example, in Rancho, I'll get specific, so I'm not just talking vague here. For example, in Rancho, there's a lot of, a lot of existing three-acre parcels. And there, they were designed for that purpose in the Rancho special plan, to be in an area with just three-acre parcels. But I'm interpreting this to say that those could be further subdivided into one-acre parcels with additional septic systems and put in, in areas where it really wasn't intended to be that way. And I understand that there's underlying zoning that says that may discourage that. But zoning changes, and we're going to change zoning. And in part of this introduction of belief, it said that the land use designations basically trump the zoning. So if we're setting up here something that the land use designation, which is RR, and the underlying zoning may say something different, but somebody wants to take a three-acre or a five-acre parcel and say, okay, now I can make one-acre parcels with this, that's what it says here, and put in septics. Where, I'm not sure that's, is that, number one, is that right? I guess that's my first question.
So, so the land use designation's a range of density in one to five acres.
Say again?
The land use designation is a range of density, as a range of zoning that would be applicable within there. And we could have two-acre parcel size zoning or three-acre parcel size zoning. And a change of that would be a legislative act. The board could consider an applicant, could, could apply for a change if it's currently zoned three-acre minimum and they want to try to subdivide that into one-acre parcels, they could apply for a zone change. And the, you, the commission and the board would debate the reasonableness of that request and decide whether or not that's appropriate or not. We'd also have to look at the infrastructure availability. I know in Rancho, there are a lot of parcels that don't perk well. And can you get a septic system on a one-acre parcel? Or does it, is the reason it's three-acre parcel because that's the best it's going to ever do because it doesn't perk? So those are the kind of considerations that would occur when we look at proposals to further subdivide.
So using Colleen's example of a three-acre parcel, if there's, if, you know, if this, they get rural residential land use designation, which means that, you know, you could go down to one-acre parcels. If that parcel, that three-acre parcel right now is zoned, you know, like residential minimum three acres, that's not going to change?
No.
I thought you were going to change all the zoning to be consistent with the zoning.
And that would be consistent.
It will be consistent.
That's why I say it's a range. So a three-acre zoning is consistent with that land use designation.
Right. So that individual property owner would have to come in and ask for a rezoning.
Right. No, I understand that, but you were going to change all of the zoning after the general plan's done.
Well, you would need to with this one. This would be compatible with the new.
Yeah, only those that are inconsistent.
But I mean, the intent is to change all the zoning at some point, right, to be consistent with the general plan.
No, well, no, but you wouldn't need to change the zoning for this example we're using.
Right, okay.
Because it's already compatible.
If you're going to tell me you're not going to change the zoning, then I would be happy. I just think that that's a possibility, that it could be changed.
I think you're going to have to change the zoning ordinance for parcels that you change that are, are no longer, whatever that land use designation is, it, there's not a dot for them that fits into a zoning category, an appropriate zoning category. In that situation, you'd have to change it. Or, my other following up on this is, let's say that Rancho parcel is, that the three-acre parcel is, you know, it's got three acres, but it, what if it has a zoning right now of, you know, one acre minimum? Then, right? Then that person could just do a parcel split. I mean, if it's already zoned one acre, so every situation's going to be a little different, but...
I really think that's what your issue would probably be with respect to Rancho. Yes, there are three-acre parcels, maybe even bigger, I'm not even, I'm not sure.
There's a couple of fives, yeah.
Okay, but there's a lot of threes and a lot of haves like mine. And I'm not sure that those threes are zone three. I, I don't know that the zoning has changed in Rancho. They just happen to be three because...
That's the way they developed them up.
That's the way that place was carved up.
Right, right. I, I just, my issue, I, you're right that it has to be changed, the zoning has to be changed, but that's an easier thing to do than changing the land use. So I'm just worried that you're setting it up for some easy division of larger parcels into one-acre parcels with septic, which is not the smartest thing to do in the county because of all the failed septics.
Right, no, I understand, I understand.
And it's not just Rancho. There's areas up in Arnold, as far as I understand, a lot of Arnold areas have RR parcels that are even fives and tens that now could be...
They can't though, because, just clarify if I'm correct, and I just want to put you at ease a little bit. This says with septic, and Peter, don't you have to have county water and sewer to be able to subdivide lower? You, you can't subdivide...
Lower than an acre.
More than an acre.
Lower than an acre.
Lower than an acre.
But if you have an acre, if you have three acres, you can make three parcels.
And you can make it perk.
So what is the restriction that I'm thinking of that says you can't subdivide anything less than a 40-acre parcel anymore without sewer and water?
That's, that's, that's an interim policy that the board adopted several years ago that says unless you have public water or sewer, you can't create more than two lots. But...
Wouldn't this fall under that?
Well, that, that goes away. When the plan's adopted, that's an interim policy until the general plan's adopted.
That does not live on.
That does not live on. That policy is an interim policy that the board adopted.
Okay, so then it's going to be one acre.
Well, no. The, the, the land use, the land use desi, I mean, if, if we were to go to that extreme, we might as well not have land use designation, we just have zoning. Or we don't need zoning, the land use designation, if we have to have a separate land use category for each zone district, then it sort of defeats the purpose of the general plan. The general plan provides categories. Any zone within that category is consistent. So if the land use is adopted for rural residential, range from one to five acre, and it's currently zoned for a three-acre minimum, that's consistent. It doesn't change.
Okay.
It doesn't mean that every single property within that designation becomes R1A. That's not, the board could decide to do that, you could decide to do that, but that's not what's proposed as part of the general plan.
Okay.
So I want to try to lay the fears that because it says one to five, it doesn't mean that every parcel is going to be one, is suitable for one. There could be ones, twos, threes, fives within that range. And that's the, the fine tuning that goes on after the general plan's adopted, then we look at the zoning.
Okay.
But something like Rancho, it's not going to change.
Yeah.
I mean, some today, if what you're saying is right, it's all zoned, I don't know what the zoning is out there, but if, if you have half-acre parcel, your next-door neighbor has threes, and they want to do a parcel map to cut it up into three ones, they have the right to do that today.
Yeah.
But they probably can't do it because they can't get it to perk. You know, so, so those are the things we look at in more refined manner, you know, after the general plan's adopted, and we then look at the zoning, and then we look at individual projects, you know, once the zoning's in place. So just because it says a range of, you know, A to B, it doesn't mean that everything is A. It's within that range. And the board has the ultimate legislative authority to say, you know, we think, you know, threes is most appropriate here, based on the land use pattern, based on the holding capacity, based on the infrastructure, all the things that go into consideration with zoning. The general plan provides that broader range.
Good question. Thank you.
Okay, I, can I just say one more thing on that?
Yes.
It's, it's just that this does make it a little easier because you're giving it that range. So if you had a five or 10-acre parcel in Arnold, for example, that was, underlying zoning was RR1, it could be now...
I think what Peter's saying is that it's not making it easier. It was always, it was always as easy or not easy, however you want to look at it, as, as it is under this plan. Nothing changes.
Well, except that maybe you would have had to get a general plan amendment and a zoning.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, so now the, the general plan is going to be more flexible.
That's what I'm saying.
In an area where the land use density is increasing, so it's going from what would have been rural transition B, the current, future single-family residential, the, the yellow on the old maps. If that were going to a RR designation, then yes, it would be easier because now you're consistent with the general plan. So one hurdle has, has, I don't think there's much of that in place where there is a significant increase in densities, except for maybe around areas where the, you know, in the community areas.
Or, or like I say, in Rancho, that was RR, it was, land use was three acres and now it's one to five. So you're actually making that part of it easier there, the general plan amendment.
That, Rancho may be the exception to the rule.
And it's, it's true. I mean, that's a reality, yes. One hurdle is...
That's been my concern, one hurdle is...
It is. It's over because all of a sudden you're...
And there are three-acre parcels that could be septic, could be put in there.
Right.
So that's, that was my concern there. Okay, can I have time for more?
Sure. We, we ate up a lot of your...
Thank you, thank you. Just had a question on the section Relationship to Other Plans and Documents, LU 1.2 and page LU 13. It says the following documents guide or regulate land uses in Calaveras County. And it just lists these documents here. And I, my question is, why aren't the associated community plan and special plans included in this section as they are also used to guide land use and guide policy in the general plan? You know, the special plans, the community plans, the desired guidelines, those are all used to also guide the general plan. So I was just wondering why those weren't mentioned in here as, as the following documents that guide and regulate land use in Calaveras County? Is there an easy answer to that, or?
I think they should be.
Well, they, they are included in the general plan, which is listed here.
Right.
So they're not excluded. They are, they're going to be by, by the recent ruling, they are going to be included in the general plan. So it's, it includes all of the community plans.
So it's not, it doesn't have a relationship to another document because it's RR1 here.
Okay, that, yeah, that's a new way this is being looked at now because we're now having community plans in here. Okay, I hadn't, I hadn't thought about that. Okay. I think I had one other, let me see. I'm sorry. Excuse me just a minute. No, maybe not. Okay, can't find it. You're in luck.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Bob.
Hi.
Bob.
Hey, Bob.
It's a question for Mr. Maurer. On the overlay for the mineral resource, I'm curious how that might impact the resource production land designation and uses. It's somewhat limiting from the standpoint of what the state classifies as mineral resource zones and what kind of minerals are in there. I'm somewhat aware of that document. And there's a number of minerals within the county that aren't shown as being of significance. So is that overlay, will that overlay be somewhat limiting then to mineral resource development in the resource production land?
So to understand the context of what he's talking about, the, the next iteration of the land use map will have an overlay that shows the mineral resources as classified by the state. We can go beyond that. That's sort of like the minimum. Here's what the state says, we have to show it on our maps, and we have to consider that as we look at land use patterns. These are important mineral resources that have been identified by the state, and we want to make sure that we can still utilize those resources in the future and not put non-compatible land uses over those important mineral resources that would then preclude the ability to mine to extract. We could certainly add additional locally-important mineral resources to that overlay if we wanted to. Does that answer your question?
We can. I guess it can. Yes. I just, I, my concern would be that that overlay would be, someone can go to that overlay and say, well, it isn't in this description. Therefore, it is of no significance. Therefore...
So we should add to this table?
I would just try to make, you know, the reason that resource production land was designated as such was because of the nature of minerals in the county. They're found throughout the county. They aren't located in any one area. They range from gravels to, to limestone, to rhyolite. And they're all over the county in different areas. And it's just if it's, if it's designated as resource production land, I, I wouldn't really want to see any other designation that would limit the ability to, to extract or to process those.
Well, I think that's part of the art of when we do the mapping, is if there are locally-important resources there...
But we're, we're, we're saying that resource production land has those resources in general.
Right, right.
And it's just that I, I'm just not sure if this would be limiting in some way to the ability to access those resources.
Not intended to.
I understand, yeah, yes.
Sometimes though, that not intended needs to be in writing.
So, I mean, if you said, even if you didn't have, you know, land classified as mineral resource areas, of, what if you had like local, regional, or statewide significance?
Well, it's specific to the state, and it does mention that where the county, and the county also is somewhat limited. When it's, when, at the last sentence, there says are suitable for mineral extraction and are protected from the approach of incompatible uses, that term I, I would like to see applied as well to those minerals in the mineral resource, not only to this classification or this overlay. Because I can see that as coming back and being somewhat limiting.
So what was the, where did you, what was the language that you were asking for?
It was, it was under the overlays, the last, the last sentence.
Okay, I see the overlays.
And it's not that that sentence is, is wrong in and of itself. It's that, does it, does it then only apply to where the overlay designates these, these resources?
There could be other suitable extraction areas, is what you're saying.
Absolutely. And that was the point of that land use designation, the resource production.
And, and I'm sure it'll happen again. Somebody'll kick over a rock and it'll go all yellow on the bottom, and they go crazy, and it's not in that designation. What do they do?
So how do we clarify this language to protect it? Come on, Kelly, you're good with that part.
Well, I'm not sure I'm following this very well because...
I'm sure I can do this on, but there's another one.
Because if it's resource production, as I read the designation of resource production, you can have mineral resource production as part of it if you're RP. I thought that this mineral resource overlay was not, was not a restriction on what you could already do on resource production land so far as producing minerals, but a kind of a refinement that says, okay, and here are the, some of the ones, some of the ones that we know are important. And so those that are identified with this overlay get protected by the language from encroachment by incompatible uses automatically because of the overlay. But that doesn't limit the mineral extraction that can be done on a plain old resource production land that's not covered by the overlay, is the way I read all this stuff. Am I wrong about that?
That's correct. You're right.
I would just, again, where this specifically states suitable for mineral extraction and are to be protected from encroachment of incompatible uses, is there any reason that language can't be added to the resource production?
I think that gets back to your, the first discussion we had regarding, you wanted to put policy statement in the description. You know, you, you suggested that we take out the language about maintaining land's viability and economic productivity and change that to a policy. We could certainly add a policy, either here in land use or in the resource production, that clearly states that it's not the intent of the plan to...
Actually, you could maybe eliminate that last sentence and achieve what you're trying to achieve. So it's...
Well, and then create, put it into a policy.
I'm sort of thinking that that is policy language. It probably should be struck from here, but put into a, a policy.
Right, right.
That makes good sense.
So on the overlay, we would, we would delete the last phrase, and are to be, and are to be protected from encroachment by incompatible uses because of the suggestion that when it's there and not in regular resource production, somehow they're different.
Right.
So we just get rid of it as a policy.
Get rid of it in, in the discussion here. And if we want to add a policy that says we're going to protect our mineral, mineral resources by, you know, limiting encroachment of incompatible uses, which I think we have in the resource production element, then I think it, it's consistent with your direction on some of the other ones. And I think it goes to the intent of what Mr. Girmendy is suggesting.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, anyone else?
Just give me one second.
One second.
Now, two, can I have two?
Hi, my name is Dave Haley, representing Castle &amp; Cook. I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time to talk about this, but we recommend an additional land use category within a community center called future specific plan areas for large parcels within a community center. What's happening in Copperopolis is a lot of the land has just been wholesale re-designated as resource production, which kind of stops the flexibility of development because of an example like Oak Canyon Ranch is already entitled, so they assume that that will develop, so there's enough land to be developed within the area, so why designate more land? And we feel that the projects that we brought forward, hopefully, will still be heard, but by designated within community centers, a category called future specific plan area, it identifies that that's possibly going to be developed, subject to a future EIR that the developer has to pay for and provide, that it will be heard and the, the land uses can go forward based on a specific plan.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I think we're going to move on. So is there, I, I don't think we've been.
Well, did you, anyone have any questions on that last?
I was going to ask you about, about the future specific plan designation, I don't, hadn't heard of that one.
I think that if we identify an area that is appropriate for future development, we, you know, have plenty of those, and, you know, take copper, for example, if, if areas that we've, on the draft, shown as resource production, you feel that, no, this really needs to be expanded and allowed for future development, I think that the, you know, either the community center use, or the, you know, low-density residential, or, you know, residential use of some sort would be identified, I don't know that we necessarily want to say it has to be done by a specific plan. Those are optional tools that the county can use. There's benefits and also maybe some detriments to using a specific plan for an individual project of that nature.
Is this where we should be talking about the specific plan component that was?
Well, let's, wait till we get to the policies there. I think that the, the proposal is that we identify another land use category.
Add one.
That says, we don't know exactly what it's going to be, but we want to see some type of future development in this, in this area.
Okay.
And it's sort of a.
Is the bigger, the bigger issue, or another way of restating the issue is that it's possible that the category resource production kind of ballooned into an area that maybe it didn't, wasn't appropriate for it, because it is, because that area is prime real estate for development in the foreseeable future.
That's going to be a big issue as we get into the map, is to, you know, should the Copperopolis area allow for significantly greater development potential than what's shown on the draft map? The question that was raised is if, if it is, make an assumption for now, for discussion purposes, what should it be? Should we designate specifically the kind of land use that's going to be, or do we just have sort of a, a separate future development that we don't know exactly what it's going to be? That makes it difficult to assess the potential impacts for it.
I don't know if I should be participating in this, because I think some of the ground that Mr. Haley's speaking of is Worcester family ground that's kind of surrounded by subdivisions and roads and was identified as sort of future master plan development.
I don't think we're going to get into that kind of level of.
Yeah, I don't think we're talking about any specific piece of property at this point in time, so I think you're not in violation of any kind of conflict there.
Your, your point is that if you, if you carve out this chunk of land that maybe is, the current map, draft map says it's resource production, but it really doesn't belong as that, it's, it really is possible development, neighborhood development. Your problem is that when you do your EIR, you need to know really what's going to go in there so that you can assess the impact.
At least some, to some degree, but what are we allowing in there?
Okay, so if you say it's a mixed-use development, residential, commercial, yada, yada, is, is that's not enough, because?
Well, we could certainly do that, and if that's, the mixed use is.
Maybe that was a bad choice.
Well, no, but that's what my initial thought was, well, that would be a thing to put there, but that's certainly a much higher density and intensity of use than it's probably anticipated out there. It's more of a, you know, res, you know, like, like what we have in the Copperopolis area, what was approved through.
With some spot commercial.
A few spots commercial, a variety of densities of, of residential, primarily residential, I'm assuming that that's what is the, the market for that region.
Right.
But I think the point here is, is that would you have to have a whole new land use category? I mean, you could probably, if that were, if that were going to change to that, there's probably enough flexibility in the designations that we have.
Well.
Yes, no?
I think, I think what, what Peter's saying is that the designations don't give him the information that he needs to.
I think he was saying that too, if, if you had a future specific plan area, that designation doesn't give you enough. That's what I heard.
Future, future specific plan is, how, how do we analyze that? If it's future specific plan with a maximum density of X and, and, you know, but I don't want to get into trying to plan a development project for someone at this stage and have the general plans to drive that development project, so.
It was something more specific than just a placeholder of them.
You need something more specific than, than a placeholder, yes, but we don't, we don't necessarily know exactly what's going to be coming there, and is it all residential? Is it a mix?
I think the, I think the bigger issue for me is that you've got two different people speaking here, you've got somebody as a developer, commercial person, and then you've got ag people here, and the, the ag people are saying we need our buffer around us, and the commercial people are saying, here's this property next to us that's resource production. I, that's, I don't even know that we should be in the middle of this right now on that one.
Without getting too much off track into the specifics of land use in Copperopolis, this is probably the, and I suppose you could have the same discussion about maybe the Valley Springs area as well. Where we've had pressure in the past, or, or, pressure, but there's been a lot of proposals for development in those, those communities, growing communities of the county, that were experiencing a high level of residential development in the past. And if and when the economy turns around and there's a new demand for that kind of residential development, we're likely to have it again, it's within the commute distance of the larger urban areas in the valley, that, you know, that's likely to occur. We have a number of proposals still pending or approved that's, that could, you know, could still develop in that manner. Do we just designate it as residential and leave it at that? And if the proponent wants to add a commercial component, then they need to come in with a general plan amendment to add some commercial to it. Do we identify where within those regions it's appropriate, well, maybe we should have 20 acres of commercial in here because of the amount of, of residential land that we're identifying.
Or do you talk to the owner that owns the land and say, would you be opposed to this zoning being changed? I mean, that's crossing a big line for me.
Well, I know that, that the issue in Copperopolis is that the potential development was significantly scaled back there, and a lot of land was designated as resource production. And, and that's a big issue that will be discussed when we bring up the maps. Do we need another land use designation to consider that type of future development? Or do we just say, okay, let's, let's keep it at low-density residential, and when the development comes in, they're going to have to go through, you know, a lengthy review process, probably zone changes and everything else, to throw in a general plan amendment to add a little bit of commercial for that? You know, is that going to be a significant stumbling block for a project, you know, to move forward beyond what they've already got to face?
Okay, in the world of planning directors, there is not a category of land use that takes into account a, a large-scale, by our standards, large-scale development which would, which would include some commercial. There's not sort of like a, a category that says, in this kind of development, you are going to have a, a range of 70 to 85% residential, acreage-wise residential, and the rest is commercial, or something like that, that, that says, we know that's, eventually that's what that's going to become, even though we don't have the, you know, it's all, it's not all drawn out yet.
In the land of planning, we can create anything we want to.
Yeah, but I just want to know if there was something off the shelf?
Not that I've seen, but I haven't looked at everyone's general plan, so my experience has been, two ways it was proposed. One was, we actually had the proposals in front of us, and we said, well, we're not ready to pursue that development, but we'll include it, and they created spots, we said, you know, sort of future, future urban development or something, I can't remember what the title was, and they had specified up to a certain number of density and up to a certain amount of commercial area, and that could be done. The other way I've seen it done is just sort of left the urban boundary, you know, kept the land within the urban boundary, but, but retained like a five-acre density, sort of a holding. That's challenging, and be, because, well, if you're planning for future development there, you know, why are you saying it's five acre? How do you calculate the impacts? Those are the kind of things that remain challenging to that.
I think the issue that I'm having with this is if you're planning for future development, plan for what the land is that you own, you don't make plans for somebody else's property. So what you're saying is you're going to encompass.
But we do that all, I mean, that's, that's what the general plan does.
I understand that, but right now, what you're saying is, I mean, we're going through this general plan, and all I keep hearing about is how important our, and Vaughn, you need to back me up on this one, because we don't get together too often. You, you're talking about our resource production and our open space and preserving that, and now you're talking about going over there and putting an overlay on and saying, this is going to become a commercial district. To me, if that's what that's going to become, if you've got this section that's commercial, that's within the developable area, but when you start outreach into it, go buy the land and come back and say you want to include it into that commercial. I, I don't, I mean, I, I am just so opposed to taking somebody's property, and as we go through this, I'm going to struggle, and saying, we're changing your zoning, because I feel like you have just stripped somebody of everything they purchased that piece of property for. So if I bought it for ag land, I want ag land, I don't want you telling me I'm now commercial. If I bought it for commercial land, I don't want you telling me now that I'm ag land. So I am going to struggle for the rest of this general plan that we're working on. And, and I just, in that future planning, I think is wonderful whenever we have a specific parcel or a zoned area that we're doing it within, that's not going to hurt people. And, you know, if you, if you choose to move in next to industrial and build residential, so be it, you chose that, not me, that's fine. But to tell somebody specifically now, this is what, I'm going to develop this area and take your zoning from you, as long as that owner's good with it, I say, go right on ahead. But if that owner's not, I hope they show up here and defend their rights. I'm, I'm leery of what, what you guys are talking about doing.
So, I mean, maybe the, the option is, is to, I mean, if this is being, the catalyst is, somebody wants to do something else with, with their property, we have a, we have a mechanism, we have a, we have a plan for that.
Yeah.
Right? And that's coming. And if it comes up and it seems like, well, wow, there's not a category that really fits you.
Yep.
Then maybe we should add one, but I don't know that this is the time to, to have that discussion.
I agree.
Since we're kind of future tripping.
Yeah.
Future tripping, I like that.
We're future tripping, yeah.
And, and I do believe when we get to the public comment periods and it comes to people's properties and they show up here, or they've put it in writing, then we're looking at it and we're going, wow, what a great idea, let's, let's, let's think about adding that, I'm open to it then. But to sit here and have this debate now on people's futures, I'm struggling with.
Okay. Back to Jeff there. Sure, Mr. Haley.
What we're, what we're concerned about is we've been downzoned to resource production on all of our land that used to be.
Well, not, we're not talking about zoning right now.
Or, or land use designation was changed to resource production, which gives fodder to a lot of other people to say, hey, there's, no other development can go on there, it's a fight that is not necessary. You know, we have been, have applications in for eight years to do something different. And so I, I just think it's arbitrary to put that designation on, is there some other designation that's better?
So the land that you're talking about right now that's been downzoned to the resource production, will you consider that a downzone?
Yes.
That's what's happened in this plan here today? Or did that happen pre this?
No, that's not what. It, it's, it's a designation that was put on, on the, on the map number three.
Oh, well, then you'll show up here when we get to that, right?
Right, but, but is there, is there a category we could put a future large holdings within a community center?
We don't have a category like that right now, and I think what.
I think that's his request, is that we come up with something like that.
Yes.
Like future development area, like you said, in the land use map number two, there is one that said that, and all of a sudden, that was dropped and put into resource production, which is a, it's a head fake.
Right. So again, I just think it's a little premature right now for this discussion, and that we are, you know, we're going to be having, spending a lot of time with you and a lot of other people about, and if they're, if it, if it seems to make sense to add a category, then I think that would be the appropriate time.
That's why I said, is this the appropriate time?
No, I don't, well, I, I mean, it's interesting, you brought it up, but it's not, I don't think we, we should, you know, carry on with this conversation, because it's theoretical right now. I think we're, we're going to have a, a real practical, you know, request when you come back and we're reviewing that map.
When we've got the map in front of us.
Yeah.
You'd point.
Yep.
Point out this piece of land, this used to be X, and now it's resource production. If that was simply reversed out and put back the way it was, as far as, as far as your concern, that would address it, right?
Yes, on the most part, yes.
Right. And, and if we are indeed talking about Copperopolis being a particular sort of area where this is only appropriate, only applicable to, to that area, then we've kind of solved it. We, we've solved the biggest problem right then and there.
Right, within a large community center, we're trying to keep growth, although Highway 49 makes sense to grow there, and we have the wherewithal to do that.
Okay.
Right now, we're stopped.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you so much. Anyone else before we move on?
Yeah.
Can I, can I piggyback on former comment? I, I'm not sure if I spoke on this topic, but even if I didn't, I have an idea that might be worth considering, and it's actually, it's Peter's idea. And this is where we allow, you don't specify any properties here, but you allow property owners to request designation of, of their property either as a specific plan with certain parameters, like density, or, or percentage of commercial, or such things like that that can dovetail into our rest of our planning. And without, if you just allow that flexibility, that solves Dave's problem, because he'll go back to his previous plan of, of having that area for future higher use. And you're not doing zoning, and by having the criteria with ceilings as to what could be done there in terms of density, you solve the problem. Right now, you know there is a problem, and this is a way to solve it, at the general plan level. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, shall we move on? Carry on? Goals and policies?
Just to conclude this discussion, so.
Oh, all righty. I know, I'm always just like, that's it, we know where we're going, we're done.
Make sort of a global change, get rid of the, you know, modify that first sentence in each one of these.
Right.
We are going to pull out any sort of policy language, and that will be followed up with, you know, either identify where that's actual policy in one of the other elements, or we may modify that and make it a policy enough to go through that. There's a couple places under the resource production, we're going to keep that language. We're going to keep that language, modify the RTA and.
Right, make RTA and RTB similar language.
Right, right. And then we're going to combine the CCL and CCR and that language will somehow be, I will work on that language to articulate what the intent of that is. And we struck the last sentence, last phrase from the new resource overlay.
I might want to add one of the same. On the relationship to other plans and documents, where it says, in addition to the general plan, the following documents guide to regulate land uses in Calaveras County. And then you list them all. And it's just like, it's all the ones that are already listed. You know, could we just say, as follows?
We don't even need the list.
That's what I'm saying, right.
That should have just been struck.
Right, so, yeah, as follows or just list them or, yeah, okay. That was it. All right, so everyone concurs with Peter's summary?
Yep.
All right. All right, moving on. Land use patterns.
So I split this into two separate goals because I really felt it was addressing two separate issues. A lot of questions came up about what the intent of this. So moved them around a little bit. I hope I didn't confuse things too much. I guess at this point, we just sort of go through the language.
Well, I had a suggested edit on goal one and that, I mean, it's, one is just to make it shorter. Development of mixed use communities that provide for a wide range of residential, commercial, visitor serving and job generating uses, period. I didn't know why we needed that facilitate their development as independent communities.
I don't have a problem with that. It's okay.
So, I mean, I had another one on the policies. Then it was, the first one that's not struck out is maintain an adequate supply of appropriately designated land of varying parcel sizes and locations to accommodate, instead of expected, accommodate planned growth. Because hopefully we'll know what we're planning for.
I've got one before that, but it relates to that one. The 1.1 was struck and the note from planning was that it didn't accomplish anything. So my note is 1.5 seems to be an expanded version of 1.1. So if 1.1 didn't accomplish anything, what does 1.5?
Well, I think it is appropriate to have a policy to maintain an adequate supply of designated land of varying sizes and parcels for planned growth. Now, what I would say is that I don't think you need all the rest of it. That would just be period.
You would stop at where?
I'd stop right after growth.
Say again?
Right after growth.
Growth?
I don't know that you have to say what, you know, with a variety of residential retail. I mean, we're already, again, unless we wanted to provide examples, but. I mean, we should have a policy that says we're going to try and provide land for growth. I mean, that's something that we can do.
Are you okay?
Yes.
You just said you wanted to provide for growth.
I do, I do want to, I do want to provide for growth. I absolutely do. I have a business in this county too.
So are you wanting to keep 1.1?
No, I think I agree with David.
You're wanting to go down to 1.5.
They say the same thing.
They do.
Yeah. It's just that 5 got expanded with all kinds of examples and I don't really know that you need that. Because if you have a list, you might leave something out. So this way, you're just maintaining an adequate supply of appropriately designated land of varying sizes, parcels and locations to accommodate planned growth. And you might just say planned growth within each land use designation. That would be the better thing to say.
I agree with the last ad because that talks about what appropriately designated means, appropriately designated in all categories.
Right, in each land use designation. And then if you look at the designations, you can see what kind of appropriate uses they're thinking there. Because we just went through all of those descriptions.
I'm good with that.
So within each land use designation.
Okay. Can we just start back at the top? Because we struck number one. I want to make sure everybody was good with that being struck according to Peter's notes. So we've kind of agreed with that on working on 1.5, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and then I want to talk about 1.2.
Two, did you say? Oh, that comes down later.
1.4.
Are you talking about goal two?
I'm sorry that the numbering is, I left the numbering the same as the original numbering.
Which is fine, but your notes are going to go from 1.1 to 1.4, which means we don't get to discuss 1.2. So I'm going down the policies by goal number. I mean, if I go off of Peter's list, it only talks about the changes he made. That doesn't mean I accept the stuff in between. So I want to go down the list.
I was going to say, I don't have a 1.2.
I think it might be easier if we just sort of went through the page down, even though the numbering sort of jumps around.
On yours?
We're going to get to 1.2.
We'll get to 1.2 as we get under goal LU2.
Right, okay.
The numbering will change when we're all done.
Don't look at this, look at this.
Right.
I am looking at that.
Well, we're going to get to 1.2.
Oh, down under policies, gotcha, go. All right, there.
So I think a question came up about specific plans under LU 1.4, second policy down, struck out.
Right.
I'm not sure it's really in the best interest of the county to require a specific plan. If a developer wants to propose a specific plan and we find it's in the interest of the county, then we can process it. But to say you must do a specific plan for any certain size of element, then what is that size? What's the threshold that says we require it? Which didn't say this, didn't seem to really make a lot of sense to me.
I'm good with that statement. Very specific, anyway, we're very general here. So I had a 1.9. In addition to the consistent zoning districts listed in table LU-2, in areas designated for future development. Is there, are there areas designated for future development?
Well, if we have, you know, large acreage, forty, eighty, hundred and twenty acres of land that's designated for commercial or residential development, this, what we're saying is that it's okay to maintain that existing agricultural or lower density residential zone until such time as it's ripe for development. So it maybe gets back to Colleen's question. Just because we've identified the land as potentially R1 or R3 acre or something like that, doesn't mean we have to rezone it today.
Doesn't mean what?
Doesn't mean we have to rezone it as soon as we adopt the general plan. It can stay in an ag zoning, it can stay in a.
So would you even need to say that? I mean, just because it doesn't need to have.
I think it is important because I've had this argument before in other jurisdictions.
So it's like you've been down that road? And we need to have it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I had trouble understanding it. Does it mean, I'm going to add a word and see if it clarifies it. In addition to the consistent zoning districts listed in table LU-2, in areas designated for future development, less intensive residential and agricultural zoning districts shall be deemed compatible, et cetera. Is that what it really means?
Yeah, I think that helps.
Okay. Well, I'm good, now I know what's. All righty. Anything else on goal one? Moving on to goal two? No?
Oh, I have a lot on goal two. I have quite a bit on goal LU-2-2.
I do.
I have several on two.
Okay, so 1.7 was moved.
It became 3.7.
Okay, and then.
And modified.
I wanted, I'm following this one, so I'm going out of line again. So 1.7, 1.9. Yeah, since he broke them up, yeah. I see that, it's just we're going to jump. Okay, go ahead.
You have something on L2?
Yes, goal LU-2 is completely new as I read this. And it starts off saying a land use pattern that maintains the open character of Calaveras County. But what about all the one to five acre parcels we already have built out here? I mean, we are not exactly all open. Sustains its natural resources. Well, we're supposed to do that through resource production. Recognizes the physical constraints of the land. Well, they are what they are. And those constraints will control what will happen no matter what the general plan says about it. The availability of infrastructure and public services, that's covered in a separate part of this called infrastructure and land use. And ensures the long-term viability of resource-based industries. I'm not sure that that belongs in this part either.
Well, I think it does, Kelly, because that gets right at the first policy, which is kind of directing growth to existing communities. So I do believe it belongs in that.
If it's covered above, then we don't need it here.
Well, that's the goal. This is the policy.
She's talking about 1.2.
Yeah, that's the policy that supports it. When you say you didn't, you weren't sure if it belonged there, I do believe it belongs here.
With that goal, one policy, LU 1-2 fits equally as well under goal LU-1. In fact, that's exactly what it fits under. And that's where it was before.
Well, yes and no. I think it fits more closely here because we're talking about maintaining an open space character. We're not saying add on to it, but I mean, we're saying maintain it. And one way to maintain that open space character is to direct growth to existing communities.
I don't see the word maintain, I see sustain.
It says right here, a land use pattern that maintains. And I think it should say open space rather than just open character. I mean, we're all friendly, open people, but.
You can't.
So I would argue that that, I mean, that's a good policy for that goal.
I think the question that Mr. Davis is raising is.
You don't want the goal at all. Oh, so it doesn't even matter if the policy supports it?
Well, that's right. Well, I think that's the final question. Is that goal appropriate? Should it be amended or should it be stricken? And the reason why I created that was we had a lot of policies, they were implementing a statement that didn't.
You didn't have a goal.
Goal one, there was policies that didn't have a goal. And so I was trying to take these policies and said, okay, well, I think we need to, what are these policies trying to accomplish?
Okay, so prior to the drafting of LU-2, what goal did LU 1.2 support?
LU 1.
There was one goal. Oh, and so, but what he's saying is that we had a lot of policies that supported the new goal two, but there was no goal, so.
I didn't think that LU 1 actually said anything related to what these policies said.
Okay.
So we need to fix LU 1 and strike LU 2.
No, I don't think so.
You could do that? You could modify LU 2?
Look, LU 2 is aimed at the rural portions of the county, the open space portions and the resource-based industries, correct?
Yes, but if you look at all of the policies, they're all about, the policies relate to how you should encourage an infill communities to reduce the pressure on resource-based and open space. So it's not about how we're going to protect natural.
Yeah, but it doesn't do that. It doesn't do that.
You don't think so?
The development of an infill within a urban area, certainly what we call urban in our county, does not reduce the pressure on to, for the sale of a piece of land of small acreage outside the city. Those are two totally different buyers.
I don't think so. I mean, if you're talking about, and then we're not just talking about residential, small business, what, you know. And if you had an existing, if you encouraged an infill in existing community versus a business locating in a, you know, a strip place, I mean, a strip, you know, like development or something.
Well, it's still two different things. An infill is a small piece of land that got kind of surrounded by development, right? Nobody, it was, nobody wanted this poor little piece of land. Instead, it got built out around it. They're almost always very small pieces of property. A business can go in there, okay? The O'Reilly's Auto Parts in Valley Springs is an infill. Now, if that, if someone saw the need for building a shopping center, if we didn't have the one that we have, and someone saw the need to build a shopping center that had a whole bunch of uses that people could park their car one place and get to all the stores, that's a different customer and a different purpose altogether. And the infill project isn't reducing the pressure for a shopping center if one was needed. An infill on a residential, a lot in Valley Springs, the existence of a, you know, an empty lot in Valley Springs, the buyer for that one who wants to build a house is not the same buyer as the guy who buys a three acre piece in Rancho Calaveras and builds a house.
So here's another example. It's, let's say, they don't always have to be tiny. Let's say there's a 10 acre parcel in McCollum Hill that is currently agriculture. So, I mean, that's one option. That would be considered infill. A lot of development all around it, it's a big piece of property. It's got sewer and water, it's got everything. This policy would encourage that development prior, before going out to Golden Hills and doing, you know, a 20 acre, you know, 20 person per acre, you know, dwelling units or whatever under one of the land use, new land use designations. I see that, I mean, that that's what it's.
You're talking about kind of a rare situation.
How rare is it though?
Of an infill 10 acre parcel. But nevertheless, going down that road, how does the county encourage, quote unquote, that property to be developed before? What was the other one you mentioned?
Let's say if it went out to Golden Hills or someplace out, more into a more rural area.
More rural area, which has some other different characteristics.
Well, they could have like resource production all around it.
Okay, how do we encourage that? By saying to the person who wants to go to Gold Hills, sorry, until somebody buys up this other piece and develops it, we're not going to do anything over here.
Exactly what it says.
Well, I don't think.
It's like you have to get in line behind acreage and.
And the only way we could do that, if that's what the intent was, was to not, to only zone the one parcel, the 10 acre parcel for whatever that use would be and not zone the Golden Hills area. But that essentially is what we do by saying, here are the areas we want commercial. We're not going to have it strung out all along the highway But that essentially is what we do by saying, here are the areas we want commercial. We're not gonna have it strung out all along the highway or, you know, out further. We want to have it more condensed.
And then that's not encouraged, that's required.
No, but it could also be.
But there are other policies that could be, you know, so that, you know, through zoning, we, you know, we say that, you know, within these areas, we adopt, you know, standards that don't require discretionary permit for development within that area. There's many ways that we could facilitate the development in the desirable places and discourage or restrict development in areas that are less desirable from the county's perspective.
Another example, someone comes in when we're looking at the map, the map's out there, and we see that the county is proposing a land use designation change for them to something, you know, to agriculture. And they were, you know, residential before. And they're surrounded, they're kind of like really close to a community plan, maybe they, a community area. And they come and say, well, listen, you know, I mean, I'm really like appropriate for development, and the county's saying I should be agriculture, and yet I'm surrounded by, you know, other urban, I'm an underutilized parcel, basically. So, this policy would say, well, you know what? You are so right. Because we're encouraging infill and revitalization of underutilized parcels. So, yeah, I think you should get that.
So, as we go through a development approval process, we need to make findings of consistency with the general plan. So, someone's proposing a development in an area saying, well, we're supposed to be directing growth here. Yes, this is consistent with this policy. As opposed to someone leapfrogging out into the more rural area and say, well, that's really not consistent.
That's my point. So, it's like, it's where, what we're doing with these goals and policies is setting up sort of the guidelines for review of when those people come, and they're coming, you know, so that we have, we have the same playbook. That's why we're doing this. So, we have the same playbook to look at and say, well, you know, we've agreed that this is an important policy and that. And what you're asking for, that's right up what we just went through and we agree with. So, it's a way to not arbitrarily say, okay, Joe, you get this, but, and you don't.
To get back to where I sort of started here. If you look at policies LU one dash two and LU one dash one point three.
You're not allowed to look at those yet.
Well, but the statement was made that these policies really didn't fit under goal LU dash one, and so we needed a new goal. But the way I read those two, leave aside LU one point six, which is a different kettle of fish, those are the only two that even arguably wouldn't fit under LU dash one, but I think they do. And I think they fit there better than under a goal that's focusing on the open space. I will grant you that whenever you, whenever you direct growth or favor growth to existing communities or you do development of infill parcels and so forth, that particular growth isn't going to an open space place. But that's a collateral, that's a collateral effect of your policies to push the growth towards existing communities and infill parcels and so forth. It's not really focused on keeping the rest of it. If you want to focus, okay, on a goal that maintains open character and so forth and so on, then you should come up with one that's a little more consistent with the vision statement and the guiding principles. Something like, ready?
Ready.
A land use pattern that allows those who own, operate, or manage the productive resources in the county to maintain open space, wildlife habitat, agricultural lands, and forests.
You know you have to read that again.
Is that, we adopted that? Is that, that's what, the one we approved?
Well, it's a paraphrase of the one we approved.
It's a draft.
Okay. I was gonna like, that doesn't sound quite familiar.
Well, it is completely consistent, if you will, with the guiding principle, because I sat down with the guiding principle when I wrote it. But what that does is instead of just saying, well, we're gonna have open character, we're gonna have physical constraints and so forth, focus on what makes that happen, which is the people who are running those lands. And what you need to do is have a goal of allowing them to do that. And if you're gonna have policies under it, have policies that do that too. Like maintain the Williamson Act, maintain the other protections.
Well, those would be more of implementation measures.
Well, yes, and they also really belong more in the resource production element where they are now. So, I will read it again.
Okay.
A land use pattern that allows those who own, operate, or manage the productive resources in the county to maintain open space, wildlife habitat, agricultural lands, and forests.
I like it.
Now, with that goal, which I think is a worthwhile goal, the policies that are currently under the existing LU two don't fit with the exception of one point six. In my opinion, they don't fit with the exception of that one policy statement.
I think that that's right. And so, if you wanted to have some policies that do fit, you would say something like, respect and protect the property rights of people in their efforts to maintain or develop productive resources.
Perfectly good statement, in my opinion.
You would have one that says something like, maintain availability of the Williamson Act contracts and other protections for agricultural and timber productivity as set forth in the resource production element. There's your cross-reference.
They target that goal. And the goal, as read by Mr. Rooster, is more specific to the rural landscape. It talks about the people who own the lands that are in the rural landscape. As opposed to a statement like the open character of Calaveras County. If the goal is really to help those people maintain those kinds of lands, then that's a better, that's a better goal statement than the one that exists here. And those are two perfectly good policy statements to support it. If we want the other, to the extent we want the other policy statements, we want to keep them because we find value there, then I think they do go up under LU one point one, LU dash one, but with different wording to LU dash one. I think you can reword that goal statement so that these other policy statements are responsive to it.
With some changes.
I don't have any language for you right now. But if you, instead of putting the period where Fawn wanted it after uses, if you continue with that facilitate the development as independent communities, then some of these policy statements, one point two, one point three, I think flow from that. Do you see what I was talking about, Fawn?
I see that.
Now, I'm not sure about one twelve and one thirteen, the new ones, yet. Because of.
Well, they don't belong under goal LU dash two, no matter how you word it.
Well, I would.
Agreed.
I think one point twelve is more of an implementation measure. You're directing somebody. Community areas shall not be expanded. I don't know. It seemed.
I tend to agree with you that that is an implementation measure.
I mean, it doesn't really, it's not really.
That's a specific action.
I guess it's a policy.
I'd have to say it's a policy.
Yeah, I mean, it is a policy, but, you know, because it's like, we're not going to allow you to do that, but.
One thirteen would fit under LU dash one, as I see it. It's facilitating the development of an independent committee. You know, independent is not even maybe a very good word, but viable.
Yeah, viable or discrete or.
Yeah, when you start talking about independent, then that conjures up all kinds of qualities that almost none of our communities have. Okay? They're not independent. You can't live in any of these communities and stay there and not leave the community to get what you need. So, if that's what a person means by independent, that's what I mean by independent, it doesn't exist anywhere. But viable.
Economically viable or.
Yeah, that's another worthwhile phrase.
Well, when you put all of those under there, I think that there's some redundancies here, too.
Could be, but at least now they fit. So, let me see if I can kind of summarize here. If we agree that LU one, as it's originally written, and we changed the word independent to viable, now LU policy, LU two, LU three, LU one point, no. One dash thirteen fit under it.
When you're saying thirteen, you mean one point three there? You jumped.
No, it's right here. It's actually written wrong. It should be L one point thirteen, not one dash. The language of those fit with, under goal LU one, as we just described it.
True.
Mr. Rooster's new goal LU two, which is, targets the open space area better in my mind, and his two policy statements, already nicely drafted, address the need for protection, or protection, if you will, I don't know if that's the right word, of that type of resource.
And then we eliminate one point six.
One point six kind of deserves its own.
I would eliminate it.
Eliminate it. You've already said it. He's already.
Agreed.
And then one point two, just to be consistent with what we did in the beginning, is to get rid of the word direct and do support.
Suppose we said in one point two, support growth within or approximate to existing communities?
I like that language because it, it's not so specific that you have to worry about some exact circle, the circle that Ms. McLuder, these was referring to earlier.
Well, what they said here is, what we changed our language in the beginning was, the main emphasis, okay, land use element is support growth to areas in and around existing communities. That was the language we used earlier.
That would be fine.
That's okay with me. I think, I think proximate means the same kind of thing.
In or around is.
In or near.
Puts it inside my circle.
I know, your circle. Circle of death. Let's see. You had a note, Kelly.
So, we're gonna start one six. One three is, one point three is good.
Why am I looking at two point four on your list?
We didn't have any issues with that.
Should we have a summary now? Or do you want to take public comment now or?
Well, let's see. I don't think we're done yet with land use patterns.
We still need to talk about one point twelve.
Yeah.
And that's in there, why, Peter?
That's the new one.
These were part of the public comments. And I guess, again, it gets to the issue of directing growth or supporting growth in an area. We've identified a community area that, so these are the areas where we've got higher intensity uses. And should we be expanding those areas, growing out, you know, your circle, I guess, of, you know, while there's still plenty of land inside, against your question, Fawn, of, we've got a vacant ten acre parcel here, why should we be expanding these community areas to be more commercial outside when we've got adequate land inside?
My question is, isn't that, when you talk about expanding a community area, that's a, that's a map issue, right?
Yes.
And there are, aren't there, what are the rules in place that already, are already in place that regulate? When you want to change something that's on the map, what do you have to do?
Well, in particular, kind of, that, my question related to that, too, is that who would actually ask for a property owner? They'd be the one that would ask, come to the board and say, I want to expand the community plan area? Or is that something the community decides?
I guess.
For expansion?
What I'm saying, Fawn, is that I don't see the need for one point twelve. It's already sort of covered in procedures that the county has that don't, it doesn't need to be in the, as a policy, because it exists as in regulatory.
No, I don't think so.
No?
No.
Well, here's a problem. I mean, if you're already, you just said, like, way back here, you just did an addition where you said you're encouraging development in or near community centers.
No, existing communities.
Okay, existing communities. But didn't you just add in or near or something? Because if you said in or near, and then you have this other policies that said you're not gonna.
What it said was, was support growth in and around existing communities.
Right. So, that's a conflict with this other policy if you're.
Well, this community areas, though, is a map issue. I mean, they are specifically defined on a map.
But aren't we referring, when we're saying, we're talking about directing or supporting growth in community centers, that that's, that we're talking about that circle, which is on a map, right?
No, not the way this is, it says existing communities in LU one dash two, one point two. No capitals, doesn't say community areas. It's just existing communities. It is not, it is not, that is not a map designation as I read this.
So, the way it would fit together is the map is supposed to correlate with the policies. And if we have, you know, existing communities here, and we have infill and area around it that's designated for a higher intensity development, and then there's a circle, you know, a border around that, however it might fit, that's the community area. And then, and ideally, we have plenty of land within that to accommodate the market demands and flexibility and all the things we've talked about. And then someone over here says, I think that this is a, you know, appropriate location for more commercial. But we've got, you know, lots of land or more development of some sort. And we've got plenty of land within that. The policy is saying, you know, we really need to look at that more closely to determine whether or not it's appropriate to be expanding these communities out into the rural areas before we've actually, you know, developed. Maybe that land that we've identified for future development has some constraint that we didn't really consider because we haven't looked at it in a fine tooth manner. We looked at it in a more broad brush. But there's, you know, soil types or something there that really precludes the development of that site as we intended. So, it's appropriate to be expanding those boundaries out into some other area.
Well, see, I think this is a problem, is that I'm not really sure about, when are we talking about community areas? Are we talking about, you know, and is there a defined boundary of a community area? And then beyond that, kind of a community growth area? You know, are we talking about?
The community areas on the map are those areas that are designated for existing as well as future development through the land use designation. Maybe we need to, if we're going to retain this concept, define better or describe or develop some policy to say, here's the purpose of the community area. And that, you know, we have, I think, you know, a policy or two that reflects specifically on, if you're within the area, there's certain standards that need, if you're outside, you know, it's a different standard.
I think, well, if we're gonna have something like this, I think it's critical because how do, I mean, then at least, I, it's like, I don't know if I'm in the area or I'm out the area. Am I halfway in or halfway out or?
We're gonna draw circles on the map for you.
Well, there is, you know, the land use map showed a boundary, a community area boundary.
So, then that would be, you know, is using the same terminology, too, of when we talk about, you know, is a community center the same as a community planning area versus a, you know, so in here, so that the language is clear about what are we talking about restricting, you know, the, it won't, the community areas won't be, I mean, we're talking about that bigger boundary, but not really talking about the community. That's what I'm saying, I'm not.
Well, the way that using the word community is confusing.
This'll help. You, Peter, decided that one point eight, LU one point eight, should be divided into two separate policies.
Yes.
If you could tell us why you thought it needed to be divided, A. And the way I read LU one point twelve and point thirteen is that they are not a division of one point eight, but that they're new, they're new policy statements. So, what was the motivation for deleting one point eight and converting that purpose into these two other statements?
Well, as I recall, the initial impetus was a recommendation from you in your comments.
I'm looking at my.
That that policy addressed two different issues. As I looked at it further and looked at other public comments, I found that they were related. And so, those, that, that one policy morphed into two separate policies that, yes, they are different than the original policy.
I'm looking at my comments to see what led to that.
And I actually don't, and I could be wrong on that. I remember you saying on some policy here that said that this really is addressing two separate issues. And maybe I've got that confused with another policy change that we made here. You know, again, I received many, many comments. You know, again, I received many, many comments on these policies, and I did my best to sort of incorporate what I felt from a planner's perspective, what made sense, given the direction that I had received.
Yeah, I had no comment on one point eight.
Okay, then I was getting that confused with another one, I apologize.
But I think they should be two separate.
I don't know, I'm just saying that maybe his explanation of why he split that up would clarify, would give us some direction here. That's all I'm after, I'm not questioning whether it was wise or not wise.
I have a question about LU one point one two. It seems to me that it incorporates a special finding that the Board of Supervisors would have to make in order to expand the community area as shown on the map. They'd have to find it's necessary to accommodate growth in the county. And if that's part of the general plan, then that would be a requirement that the Board would have imposed upon itself, as well as future boards. And I guess my question is, why would we want to do that? Why would we want to tie the Board's hands? There may be other reasons that come up in the future for expanding a community area other than what's stated here. Why is this necessary?
Well, I guess that was getting to the issue of encouraging infill, making sure that, or, you know, trying to develop within the communities before expanding outside the communities.
But the Board, whenever Board gets faced with that issue with a particular community area, can make that judgment in light of the other policies here without tying their hands. It seemed, to me, this is a kind of a litigation breeder, okay? When somebody wants to have a community area expanded to do something, and the Board can't make or doesn't make this finding, then you're in court. And like I say, if there's a good reason for expanding it other than necessary to accommodate growth in the county, they ought to be able to do it. Why should this Board and this general plan tie itself down in that way?
And I understand that you're saying that it is, it's directed toward the policy of encouraging and development of infill parcels. Fine, we want to do that. But then do we need to, do we need to back that statement up with an even more specific statement? This is, that's a general statement, a general goal, a pardon me, a policy, nothing wrong with that. But this one here is an implementation measure, which I agree with Mr. Rooster, that it's, talk about tying the hands, the, you've got a, you create a barrier there that's in the language necessary to accommodate growth in the county. It's a very specific implementation measure, which I don't think belongs as a policy statement, inasmuch as we already have a policy statement that we're going to encourage development of infill parcels.
Well, if you don't feel it's appropriate.
There could be lots of ways that we encourage the development of infill parcels, and your department can come up with some ways, and the Board can agree or disagree with you, and we have a list of ways that we do that.
I'm hearing two different things. One is that it's inappropriate, we should just delete it. And secondly, or alternatively, we come up with some language and make it more of an implementation measure, where someone is proposing to expand beyond that, that they provide some information to the county to, for us to assess whether it's, you know, I'm just coming off words off the top of my head right now.
Wouldn't they have to do that anyway? In the normal course of business?
Not necessarily. I mean, right now, if someone wanted to propose a general plan amendment, there'd be nothing that would say you have to sort of provide us an analysis of why you think this is appropriate, other than I want to. And then we make a determination based on, you know.
Well, I guess.
Today's whim, whatever the Board feels is appropriate.
I guess, maybe I don't understand what expanded means. If you're talking about you want to do something that's outside of your zoning, you're going to.
Make the circle bigger, all right?
Okay, but that's, yeah, that's called rezoning, and that's not something that you just do because you like doing it, you want to do it.
Well, it has to go, you're right, it has to go back to the Planning Commission, the Board, to consider that. But are there, is there specific information that we might want to have when we make that consideration?
Without that in there, then there would be no, you have to make a finding that it's consistent with the general plan, because, oh, yeah, or it's inconsistent with the general plan, if somebody comes in with a proposal to have that subdivision or whatever that's outside of that community circle, that circle.
It's not really a general plan, it's a specific plan, and if you try to build outside of the specific plan, then you have to, you have problems. I take real issue with this. I mean, it's, this is a general plan, and now what you're saying is, is if someone wants to build outside of one of our parameters on our maps, then it's going to take some sort of program that we don't even have set up to appeal to somebody, maybe the supervisors, to build outside of that area. Right? We don't even have a plan for it, we don't even know who you go to to build outside of what we tell you in our specific plan where it's built.
Well, no, if someone's proposing a general plan amendment, they want to put some high-density residential or commercial or some use that's, you know, outside of those community areas, it requires a general plan amendment. The process is, they go through you, they go through the plan, and they go to the Board for final decision.
Outside of the community area and, and in, on a parcel that's not zoned appropriately for that.
Yeah, if it were, those areas that are designated for whatever that use might be would be within the community area. And so if it's rural residential, or not rural residential, but, you know, a transition zone or a resource production zone, and they want to develop that in something, you know, a more urban nature, then that's outside that boundary, the finding of the Board would be that it's necessary, there's a demand for that, that we can't accommodate that growth within what we have already, that we need to start expanding that. The issue here is to sort of prevent this leapfrog development and sort of jumping out into the rural areas, then create some of those conflicts that Mr. Guaramendi was referring to earlier. You know, we have the ability to expand where we need to, and this is just a tool that some communities use to say, before we, you know, expand these areas, let's take a look to make sure it's really necessary. But if, you know, you don't, this is your opportunity to make the modifications, so it's up to you guys what you want to do.
So would it have to be by the Board?
Well, they're the ones who are, they, it's a legislative act to change the general plan, so yes, the Board will have to make that finding.
To expand the community area would require a general plan amendment, wouldn't it?
Right.
So it has to be done by the Board.
Right.
And what this does, it puts in a unique restriction on the Board's ability to amend the general plan in this general plan, which to me just seems odd. They ought to be able to amend the general plan for whatever reasons are appropriate at the time.
It's a mechanism to, it's like a red flag, you know, so it's like, it's, he's like, Kelly's, well, yeah, I see that.
We're in a red flag. I mean, suppose somebody comes in and says, I disagree with this finding, that it was necessary to accommodate growth, and I'm going to go to court about it.
Well, they could, right.
Well, yes, but should they be able to, because we, the Board will have already disabled the county from being able to amend its general plan, community area designations by this little clause? Why would you set the county up for that kind of thing?
Well, that's a good point. Even though the sentiment, I think, is really, I think it's important, because to me, the red flag is, like, hey, Board, you know, you're leapfrogged, if you approve this, you are essentially going against all of the other policies in this, you know, that we've just set up with land use patterns. So it's a way to say, hey, you know what you're doing. But I appreciate that you are also opening some legal conundrums, yeah.
On the other hand, it provides the basis for which the Board can say, well, we have all these other policies, but because we need additional land for this use, here's the findings we've made in order to do that, and therefore we're expanding it. So in a way, it sort of protects the Board. It could go either way.
Well, but you could do that without this clause.
You could, rather than mandate it, that's something that the Board ought to be doing when they make their determination.
That's right. And when the issue comes up, somebody who doesn't like the expansion of the community area can point out to the Board that doing so is not consistent with all of these other policies, and they can hash it out then. As I said earlier, I think this is, can serve as a litigation breeder that puts the county sort of at a disadvantage, if you will, self-imposed.
Right.
Down the road. I just don't see any need for it, given the risks that come with it.
We do not have a policy, obviously, for changing the general plan at this point in time, for procedure for somebody that wanted to come in and amend.
Yeah, they can do it all the time.
Yeah, file a general plan amendment, we've done that several times already.
Revisiting it, we can do that up to four times a year?
Yeah. Okay, so I say we strike this, we have policy and procedures in place if somebody wants to make an amendment to the general plan and ask to expand outside of a certain area. Right? Yes? No?
Your choice, your call.
I think that the string of things that we do is, this is kind of repetitive, but we keep the language of LU dash one. Instead of independent, we write viable.
That's done.
Or, no, that says.
Economic.
Development of mixed-use communities that provide for a wide range of residential, commercial, visitor-serving, and job-generating uses that facilitate economic growth and community vitality.
Fine, community vitality, I like that even better. Okay, so you got that one, and now, one point one was struck, there's no argument there. One point four was struck, we haven't discussed that, that's done. One point five, I don't know if we had any discussion about that.
We did.
Yeah, we did.
That would be.
We drew a period somewhere.
And we put in each land use designation.
Right, so that would read.
Okay, so we've done, we edited that one.
Let me just say what it is.
Yeah?
Okay. Maintain an adequate supply of appropriately designated land, of varying parcel sizes and locations to accommodate planned growth within each land use designation.
Right. Okay, so that, one point five is edited, we agreed with that. One point seven is struck, it's been moved, we'll deal with that later. One point nine has been added, a word shall be deemed compatible. Mr. Rooster's edit. Then, policies continuing under LU dash one will be one point two, existing one point two.
As edited.
As edited.
Striking the word direct, putting in support.
Yes, was there any other edits to that?
Within and around.
In and around, support growth in and around existing communities.
Okay.
It's kind of subjective.
If you're with me, I can keep going then.
Sure.
LU one point three is now continuing on that list. LU one point six has been struck. And LU one point one three would be on that list. Of policies.
And LU one point one two is not with us anymore.
LU one point one two, thank you, is struck.
Well, I don't know if we voted on striking that.
Well.
Well, we're just summarizing our, and then we're going to have, and then we're going to have some public comment, yeah.
That would strike that. Then LU dash two, rewritten per Commissioner Rooster, with his, I believe it was two policy statements.
Correct.
Supporting it.
Perhaps you could read those, Kelly?
Which deserves rereading for a refresher.
Ready?
Ready.
Goal LU dash two, a land use pattern that allows those who own, operate, or manage the productive resources in the county to maintain open space, wildlife habitat, agricultural lands, and forests. Policy, respect and protect the property rights of people in their efforts to maintain or develop productive resources. Next policy, maintain availability of the Williamson Act contracts and other protections for agricultural and timber productivity as set forth in the resource production element. I should amend that, agricultural, mineral, and timber productivity.
And I think you should look at your goal statement with respect to that same issue, because you mentioned ag, open space and ag, but not necessarily the full range of resource.
We can add mineral resources and forests.
Or just, yeah, okay.
Got it.
Okay.
All right.
That lays out the proposed changes.
All right, so would anyone in the audience like to have a discussion about land use patterns with us?
House of California Taxpayer Association, on, we agree with the LU one clause as it was amended with the word viable. On LU one point one, we like the word expected growth rather than planned growth, because it's pretty hard to plan growth.
Now, LU one point one was struck.
Oh, was it struck, okay.
Yeah.
Well, that's good.
You're looking at an old version.
All right.
But the same language as in one point five.
Right.
Correct, it's picked up and expanded on in one point five.
Okay, on one point five, I don't have recommended changes to the one that's, that's already been created. On one point two, we use the words like encourage, support, and direct, what's better would be allow, allow. What's, what do you, if you use the word support, how are you going to support it? Are you going to spend tax money? Are you going to use police power? Are you, what are you going to do to support whatever you want to support? But if you, if you use the word allow, then it becomes a responsibility of the property owner to carry the ball from there on. So if you use, in that case, we use allow for growth to existing communities while responding to the marketplace and the wishes of the property owner. And then strike the last part, protecting and enhancing community and neighborhood character, because that's awful hard for county government to do without fouling up the process. On one point three, encourage the development of infill parcels, we would think the best thing would be to strike that, because the question of infill parcels is quite often brought up by John Buckley and others, like, there's a big problem with the marketplace. There is no problem with the marketplace, those properties are owned by human beings, just like you and I. And the value of those parcels are what they are. They may have problems in being developed, they may, maybe the property owner just wants to hold that parcel for future investment for his children. To say that you're going to use governmental know-how, and like you're smarter than they are, and say, we're going to force that infill of those parcels, oh, no way. And all it does is complicate the market process. And the market process will take care of that. And there will be some parcels that are not infilled, just because human beings don't always think alike. To try to have a government policy that says you must infill these parcels before you can develop outside of that area, doesn't make sense, because it conflicts with reality and the marketplace. But if you must use that clause, use encourage development of infill parcels and redevelopment of underused parcels as the market evolves. So we just neutralized it, and took the teeth out of it, and it won't hurt anybody as much as it would otherwise. Going down to LU one point six, you had balance, respect for and protection of property, of property rights with the need.
We've eliminated that one, Al.
Oh, good, good, because I had, I don't have to talk so much. And then you started to leave the LU one. And then you started to leave the, the LU one and go to LU two. We have comments on that, but I don't think you really covered LU two quite yet.
Yes, we did.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
Okay. Well, in LU two, on LU two, 2.4, we probably should start, the marketplace will determine infrastructure such as water and sewer and high.
2.4.
Capacity roads.
Actually, you now, you now jumped ahead of where we're at.
We haven't gone that far yet.
Oh, okay.
For infrastructure.
You're in the next section.
Yeah, we haven't done that yet.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
What was the word that we chose to replace direct on LU 1.2?
Support.
Support, and I like his allow.
Hi, Vicky Rainkey, Calaveras County Republicans. First of all, I like a lot of the changes that were made. Mr. Wooster's new goal, I think, does incorporate some of the things that were talked about in the introductions and are important issues in this county because we are rural. And I also agree with a lot of the changes that Al Segala just talked about, so I don't want to repeat those. I wanted to look at the L1, 1.2, L1.12. I think I agree that that should just be taken out. And Lisa, I love your visual of the circle. All of a sudden, it was like, oh, that's a really good way to look at it, and it feels horrible to, to imagine this circle and nothing else gets outside of it. So I think any language that feels that way needs to be taken out because we're talking about being a little more flexible, letting people come to the county to develop a piece of property. No, they don't all get to develop it, but to have, have that ability to do that because you own a piece of property, you should always have that ability. And the government should not be continuing with their thumb on people because they think they should have control. So again, the way this is heading is feels better, feels like, you know, people have that opportunity to come to you, to ask to do something with their property. And so these, that particular one just needs to go away because it just makes it too restrictive.
You talked about 1.12?
Yeah.
It's gone.
No.
I don't think you had taken it out completely.
Oh, I'm sorry. We were discussing it being gone.
Yeah, so I'm agreeing that it should just be gone and for those reasons. And then L.1.3, I'm not sure what happened with that one. Is that just staying here or was that struck?
1.3?
That was being moved back up under goal one.
It's staying, but it's moving.
Moving back up to goal one.
1.13.
It's staying, but it's moving under the first goal, not the second one.
Okay, so again, that word encourage, and I know Al talked about it too, as we reviewed it, we talked about the word allow rather than encourage for the reasons Al talked about. And I think it, it makes it more open to people being able to come and ask, okay? Doesn't mean everybody gets everything they want, but we should be open to letting people come to ask. So I just wanted to, that word could be changed possibly to allow. That's it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, Colleen Platt, MyValleySprings.com. I'd like to maybe discuss the whole idea of the community area designation. My thinking is that, that's a new invention from this draft plan because there used to be community plans before. And then when this draft plan was written, community plans had been removed. So the term community area is a new term, correct?
That's correct, yes.
In this draft plan?
Yes.
So now we've gone and put community plans back in, so we now have two terms for the same thing, basically, because they used to be called community plans. They were removed, and then they were called community areas. So now we have all this discussion about community areas, and now we have community plans back in, which to me is causing a little confusion. You know, the original community plans had boundaries, and they still have boundaries if we're putting them back in, the current community plans, whether they're adopted or new or whatever, they all have boundaries. And these community areas also have boundaries that were somewhat based on the community plans. So I'm confused, and I think this is leading to confusion because we have both now. We have both community plans with boundaries and we have community areas with boundaries.
And is it the same circle?
Is it the same circle?
Yeah, I don't know.
And the whole reason for having to worry about what the community areas meant and what their boundaries did is because we didn't have the community plans in there. Now we do.
So, well.
So, or do we have, well, maybe we do or maybe we don't, but we're told that we're going to have an element that has community plans. So isn't, is that redundant? Is it a conflict? Do we have two things we're talking about now? And, and the original reason, I think, for some of these new policies, LU 1.12 and 1.13 probably was because of that confusion. What do these community areas mean and how do those boundaries get adjusted down the road? Well, in the past, we had community plans, and those would get adjusted when the community plans were updated or revised or whatever by the communities and the board. There was a process for doing that. So these new community areas didn't have anything set up for that, so that's why all this came up in the first place, is what do these mean and what do we do about them? So that's kind of my, my comment is I like the idea of what we're trying to do here because we didn't have community plans.
Right. In some areas, it may take a while to get to. I mean, I think it's important to have policies in here that address community planning and community areas that may not.
That may not get the community plans.
Yeah, and it may be a long time, so I think it's important, but I think it is, and that's what I was kind of getting at with the, you know, are we talking about, I don't know if those circles are the same.
Right.
I don't know, I don't, you know, but it's important that we define our terms so we all know what we're talking about.
Right.
You know?
Right.
And there should maybe be some discussion here, reference here to the community plan, to the community plan element in here too about that there are.
Yeah, it's because this whole chapter doesn't even really mention the community plans, so how do we deal with both of that?
Or just that, that element of the, of the general plan.
The element, right.
Yeah.
And the idea about there being circles, well, there's not circles. There's community plan areas. That's what this all started about, was the communities deciding where our area was and what we wanted and whether we wanted to grow or, you know, where we thought growth should be. That was all set by the communities. It wasn't a circle drawn on a map or anything.
But I'm not even sure if those boundaries are the ones that are going to be in the community plans because, you know, the county made those boundaries a lot smaller. So I, I think that, I have no idea what.
And there's.
Where that circle is.
Right, and there's different versions of different community plans.
Right.
And there's, you know, the Mocul dated da-da-da, and then there's another Mocul, and there's a San Andreas this.
Not that we want to create an issue about the community plans.
Need to get into that now, but.
And about them causing problems. We don't want to do that.
Right.
But there just needs to be consistency with, with what we're talking about.
Right.
Community plan areas or just community plans or.
Exactly.
Where that circle is. Is there one circle?
And are we going to cause conflicts by referring to one thing and then we've got two things? That's another concern there. But I do support the idea of these policies, if we can resolve those conflicts. I mean, encouraging mixed use in the community areas, that's the whole purpose of this general plan, basically, and not expand, that's why I was concerned, that the idea of expanding them with the community areas that just had these lines that we weren't sure what they meant. How did those get expanded? Just because a parcel gets changed in land use with a general plan amendment doesn't mean that moves the line of the boundary. It just may jump the development outside of it. That's why it does need to be addressed somehow. Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. Anyone else? No? All right, so we had a, one suggestion that I noted was to change allow, or change encourage to allow on 1.3.
1.2.
And 1.2. Both.
If I could weigh in on that for a moment, I would prefer support or encourage because it's a more proactive, that we actually would maybe include provisions in our zoning code that would actually support the development rather than just simply a passive allowing it.
In fact, my note is that it's already allowed.
Right.
So you haven't really done anything if you just allow it, but I, I think it's, and encourage is more proactive in how you go about doing as.
It's gonna be a part of the implementation part of zoning ordinance, those kinds of things.
I think it's appropriate to encourage it.
And I don't see that there's any teeth in this statement, you know? It's just we're encouraging it, but there's no, there's no regulatory, you know.
No. It, it can be any number of things. It can be, you know, really aggressive or just some kind of helping hand. I don't know what it means, but, but that's up to implementation measures to come up with that. But allow, just, it's already allowed, so that wouldn't even be necessary.
Mr. Wooster?
Well, when you use the word encourage something, that doesn't necessarily imply that you are saying you are discouraging something else. I view this as looking to doing something positive.
Right.
Rather than stopping something else from happening.
Right, because if you allow something, you're, disallow something else.
It's not at the cost of something else. Not, not instead of, right.
Okay, I think that was the only, was that, was there another?
But there's still.
Well, you know, I think that, that Colleen brings up some good questions.
Yeah.
About the, the purpose of the community area, how they relate to the community plans. I think with some of the other edits that I've been directed to do, I need to add some discussion in the introductory or, you know, the, some, I'm not sure exactly where it would go, relationship to other plans perhaps, or under the land use, just, land uses discussion of, you know, what is that? What's it mean? What's its purpose? So I will be bringing that back as a part of some of the other edits that I've been directed to make.
Okay.
And we'll probably have further discussion on that.
Is it fair to say that where you have a community plan that has a particular area described, that the map that shows community areas will at least encompass that area?
Yes.
Maybe more? In other words, you could have a community area on your map that's actually bigger.
Your, your question is, is in that circle, will there be land uses on the outside that you'll see?
As part of the community area.
Yes, that's his question.
It, it could, yes.
How do you show that as a kind of a sphere of influence sort of a thing?
Well, there'll be a.
Community plan boundary.
Community pound boundary, and then there's a.
Just beyond.
A line that says, here is the community area. And, and it's, and another way to describe.
In the 96 map, was that the big square? The squares that were drawn around all of the communities? It was just a.
Well, all of those, those were where we had community plans. So those squares were sort of like white holes that said, okay, well, the general plan doesn't address that, but the community plan does, so if you're in that white square, you gotta look here instead.
Yeah.
It makes sense to have them co-termines.
Makes sense to have them what?
Co-ter, or, you know, the same line.
Right.
You know, so the, the community plan addresses the entirety of the community area, both what's existing today as well as the future growth area of, of that community. To move out into the rural area beyond it, you know, that sort of exceeds the, sort of the planning authority, I guess you'd say. But it could, you could have an area where you, the community plan is more focused on the central core of the community, but we have a larger boundary that we deserve to be community area. I think that most of the community plans looked at the broader area of the community, and so my thought is that they're probably going to be ending up being the same, but it's not necessarily that's the case. And I think we'll sort of get that as we get into the community plans.
So they would have community plan and community plan, community center plan.
Sounds like Colleen was saying it was confusing.
Yeah, and, and maybe we really need to come up with a different term rather than community area so that we don't confuse the issue anymore than it already is.
Because there'll be community use with community plans and community use without community plans.
So, so we use, community is a sort of a generic term for what we recognize as a community, you know? The old historic towns.
People's area.
This is the controlled area.
And then we have the community plans, which are finite boundaries, which, you know, have plans and have been adopted in that specific community. And then we have community areas, which are a formal term, capital letter C-A, that has a meaning within the general plan.
Right.
Well, I might be missing something, but when I go to table LU dash two, which is on page LU 14, it has the list of all the land use designations, and I don't see community area there.
It's not. It's not a land use designation. It's just a boundary.
Right.
But I think that we need to clarify that better, and there probably, either, we decide we're not going to use it.
Well, it's a boundary, but what does it mean? I mean.
I think that's Colleen's question.
Yes, and I think it's a very valid question.
Yeah, it is.
That with, the, so the only, no, let me start over again. We do have at least one policy that I can think of that has a specific standard that differs, if you're within this area or without that area. And that has to do with the level of service standard for traffic within an area.
That's in the circulation element?
That's in the circulation element, yes. There, I, I think that there are other, but I'd have to go back and double check to make sure, other policies relating to public services and facilities that may differ within the community area as opposed to outside of it. I sort of hate to use this term, but other communities use the, you know, like urban limit line or Elrata County used, used community regions. So there are different, different terminology that basically say, here is where.
The people live.
The, the people, the development, the, the, you know, urban type commerce occurs, and outside that is the resource-based uses and rural living.
Would, are you, did I hear you mention that you might write an explanatory note?
I think it's necessary.
In this area here?
It could be within background and setting. I think it probably is better suited in, somewhere in the description of land uses. It's not really a land use. That's why I'm trying to figure out what would be the best place to put it.
I think it's more, I think it's a better note for this section in my mind because it sounded like you were almost drafting pretty good language just a moment ago.
I couldn't remember what I said.
Terminology.
You were saying urban and.
Right.
Urban limit lines and.
Yeah.
I think it would get lost under, in the table, in the tables.
Where you, where you have it referred to now is under land uses, just before you get to table LU dash one.
Oh, there we go.
That's where you describe it. So if you want to say more about it, you might do it right there.
But, yeah.
Well, that's a good idea.
Community area, quote unquote. Excellent.
I need to come up with a good word for that.
I knew there was a good place for it. Thanks, Kelly.
Can you write a quick, very quick comment?
Yeah, well, I was just gonna ask for more clarification because when Colleen got up and started talking, I did realize I had a completely different thought of my mind of what this was referring to. So I guess I'm just gonna make this comment, so as you're continuing to clarify it, community areas, I didn't take it as the community plan areas. I took it just as community areas, that we don't want to build anything outside of them. So just so that you kind of have that.
That, that was the original intent, but how they relate to the community plans is something that I hadn't really thought of that much as we went through this, these edits, so. We'll work on that. We'll expand the language here, and when we come back with subsequent edits after we're done with the review, I'll be working on these as we, you know, continue to process, so I'll bring them back to you when, as soon as they're available.
Any other comments on this now? So I'm just setting everybody's expectations. I have to leave here by five today.
Oh, no.
Five?
Darn it.
Yeah, I know. We're okay with that.
I don't think we've wrapped up our directions for Peter because we, we took comment and we reacted to some of those, but I don't think we put the stamp of, here's, here's what we expect.
I, I think we have it.
I think with that, because I think the only other.
Let me just, very quickly summarize. There's modifications to goal one, or goal LU one, LU 1. L U one point five, we've, I guess there's one question whether planned or expected is the best word.
I, 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 either one is, I'm fine, I think I'm the one who said planned, but I expected, I could, I could go with that.
I think expected is better.
I do too.
I'm fine, I'm good.
So we'll keep expected within the plan.
I was the only one that suggested it, so I'm good.
Yeah, as well as the other edits, add the word deemed to L U one nine, we're using Kelly's language for goal L U two plus the two additional policies, I have not been able to write that fast, if you have that written down, I can get a copy of that, and that has copy, excellent. We are, we've modified L U one point two, and that moves back up under goal one. L U one point three is fine, moved up to goal L U one, L U six has been, one point six has been stricken, L U one point twelve has been stricken, and L U one point one three goes under goal one.
And the only change there is it's no longer historic, local, and regional.
Right, I circled that L B and then.
No longer what?
Well, we, we collapsed that one.
Collapse local, regional into one, so that'll be modified to reflect that change.
Right. All right, we're good?
Agreed.
All right.
We're good.
Do you want a little five-minuter before we work our last hour?
Did you say you had to leave in five minutes, you have to leave at five?
I have to leave at five.
Oh, good, yes.
But do you want a five-minute break?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so four o'clock promptly, right back here? Listen, you guys just wish I couldn't talk instead of seeing.
No. You were thinking it, Ted.
Using the gavel. All right, we're back.
I've never seen you.
I know, I'm desperate now, we're back from our recess. So now we're going to be talking about infrastructure and land use, so I'll entertain comments. Let's see, L U two.
I'll lead off here, let's see. On L U two, you've deleted the word compact pattern of growth, but in my mind, just deleting it doesn't change the effect of the goal, which I have to consult with my notes now to get what I meant by that. Compact is vague, and could be, I'll just read my note. Compact is vague and could be interpreted so strictly as to inhibit growth that is reasonably close to existing infrastructure, et cetera. Also depending on the interpretation of compact, it can be described as inconsistent with character of the county, with few exceptions, meaning the character of the county is not currently historically compact. So, and I think I have the same problem with other aspects of the language in the general plan, when we talk about, we want to be, we want to preserve the character of the county, fine, that, as a goal, but we want to encourage compact pattern of growth, which is not in my mind, to my way of thinking, consistent with preserving the character of the county. So.
That's going back to business of having everybody in the same corral.
But effectively, effectively utilizes adding those words does change it to me.
The word compact is now out, correct?
Right.
It's, it's out, and I guess what I'm saying is that, and what pattern of growth, let's see, what does it mean without that word in there? A pattern of growth and development that effectively utilizes, that's new language, the planned provision of adequate infrastructure, facilities, and public services. The planned provision of adequate infrastructure, facilities, and public services is the compact pattern. But that's why I'm saying eliminating the word compact doesn't really change the meaning of that, that goal. And I have a problem with.
Okay, so I'm visualizing my circle, and that pattern of growth inside that circle is gonna try to keep infrastructure, facilities, and public circles, public services inside that circle, I, I don't have an issue with the way it's written.
I guess, looking at my note, if, if it would include, if it, if it could include language to the effect that it, growth that is reasonably close to existing infrastructure makes it a little bit more usable.
I don't think that it excludes anything, it doesn't say only in community centers or only in community areas, it doesn't exclude in or near.
Okay, then what would be met by planned provision of adequate infrastructure? Maybe that includes what I, my, the concept that I'm just talking about, where you, something that's reasonably close is in that.
A road extension.
Planned for, for, it's in the, it qualifies as a, as being included in the, in the planned sphere of, of adequate infrastructure.
Right, so if it's water supply, for example, the water district, you know, may have plans for extending water to certain areas, and that would be something that we would try to coordinate our land use decisions as we approve projects, that this is consistent with their plans, and it utilizes, you know, effectively utilizes the, the resources that are there, the, the water supply, the ability to provide public sewer, the road system, the ability for police and fire protection to serve those areas, all of that is sort of coordinated with, and that was actually the word that was used earlier, you know, in the prior draft, was, was coordinated with, but I, I felt that effectively utilizes was a better, better terminology. But, but essentially that's it, as we look at, at new development in the county, that we have the resources available to serve that, and we're not, you know, greatly expanding these, which is gonna cost the county, the developers, the public, a lot of money over the long run for having broadly dispersed system that's, you know, utilize what we have here. I guess that's what I'm trying to get at.
Okay, you, you mentioned water as an example, so if we were to look at the water district's plans for the future, do they do the twenty-year picture too? The, is it more, is it pretty close to what we're required to do?
They have requirements to, to have capital improvement plans and look into the future, whether it's twenty years, I don't know, excuse me, but they, they do, you know, we, I think every five years, maybe it's every ten years, the LAFCO does the municipal services review that looks at the ability of the district to actually serve their, you know, the constituents within their district as well as their planned growth, how do they have the capacity to serve what they say they, they intend to, what's it gonna take to do that? What are their long-term plans, we looked at some of that the other day in the, the background report of, you know, what, what infrastructure they have, and how much can they actually support? So, yes, they do that, I don't know whether it's a twenty-year and it correlated directly with ours, but they are looking into the future of what they need to provide, it, it's an iterative process, they look at what we're saying, we're gonna, you know, propose, you know, ten thousand people in this area, they're gonna say, well gee, we need to start looking at how we're gonna provide water service to that, vice versa. A district says, we have enough water capacity and infrastructure to serve ten thousand people here, well then, that would be the place that we would want to put ten thousand more people. It, you know, sort of back and forth between those districts and the county.
So the goal is to, is to, to plan for growth that has, that utilizes the infrastructure that is available and will be available as they expand their services versus just like, we don't care if there's no infrastructure there, we're just gonna.
Right, okay, so if I look at, at the water district map, would they have like dotted lines for, for extensions of mains? We, we think.
They might.
That would, we're gonna have to go in that area at some point, we're gonna have to take that six-incher and, and extend it down the road, that sort of thing?
Yes.
And, and you say that sometimes it happens the other way around.
Well, it should be looking, it should be going both ways.
Right.
We're looking at what they can provide, they're looking at what we're planning for.
Right.
Because they need customers too, so.
With that in mind.
They're gonna utilize the lines.
That helps clear up to me the direction of this goal.
Okay.
To my satisfaction.
The only thing I would suggest is, is the word adequate again, I mean, because it's sort of like, we're not gonna plan for inadequate. You know, do we need adequate?
Agreed.
All right, policies?
I'm okay until two point four.
Same here.
Same here.
Same here.
The first thing is, it says, "Infrastructure such as water and sewer, et cetera, should not be extended." If I understand things correctly, the county doesn't control the extension of infrastructure such as water and sewer. People like C C W D do, so I'm not sure how this fits into this general plan. I mean, are we telling C C W D what they can do here, I don't think we can do that.
Well, the county controls it by approving land use applications. So if we, if we approve a project that currently doesn't have water and sewer, well beyond areas that we said, here's where we think it's appropriate, and that, that development requires then the extension of water and sewer, that's where this policy would play.
I don't think it's really worded in such a way as to convey that. It's, it's worded in such a way as to just saying that infrastructure shall not be extended.
I guess the other side of that is that the special districts all need to make a finding of consistency with the county's general plan when they approve their capital improvement plans. I'm not sure that's done very regularly here, but state law requires them to do that. And so if they're saying, hey, we're gonna extend water out to this area, even though there's no, no development, no plan for development in that area, that would be something that would control their ability to do that.
But doesn't two point five take that into account? It doesn't, two point five do everything we need to do with respect to this, the same concept that we just talked about in terms of the goal statement? It's an either-or situation, it's, the facilities are there, or they're gonna be extended as necessary to serve the requirements of a project.
Two point four is more of the general, we want to have a compact, no, I'll get back to that. We want to make sure that we don't extend infrastructure out into rural areas that would put pressure onto rural areas for more development, and two point five is, before your project gets built, these improvements have to be in place, we're not gonna sort of, you, you, the developer's responsible for ensuring that infrastructure's gonna be available for their project, even if it costs a lot more than, you know, their primary cost.
The policy statement should be more directed toward what the county does in terms of project approval, as opposed to from the other end of the equation, infrastructure expansion, which I believe mimics what Mr. Worcester is saying.
The other issue I have with this as written, well, another issue is, as written, it would be impossible to develop water for ag from C C W D outside of these areas. In other words, you couldn't ditch water out of the South Fork and McCallum for irrigation. Period.
That's an issue, it's an issue.
We could qualify that by saying, "Infrastructure serving urban development," or something like that.
I, I think that I'm having the issue with the "shall not be extended outside."
But.
And lastly, then there's caveats.
If it's not under our controls, Mr. Worcester points out, why are we talking about that?
Because again, the districts need to be consistent with our.
Of what you were worried about earlier, though, of getting it all into the same corral and closer together, whether it be for control or whatever reason they might want, it just, it seems more like what you were worried about earlier.
It, it, it is a revisiting of the same subject matter we just did under land use patterns. But if it needs to be revisited again under the, under the subject matter of infrastructure, okay, but it would seem to me that if we're gonna have a statement that talks about what we're, what we're not gonna do, it ought to be directed toward what the county does, not what C C W D and other agencies do.
But what Peter said is that the special districts would call, you know, if they're, I guess theoretically, you know, someone wants to have a, you know, water line extended, and, and they would.
Technically, they're supposed to bring to the planning commission each year their capital improvement program, and we need to review it to find it consistent with the general plan. I don't believe the districts here realize that they're supposed to do that, but that's provision of state law.
I don't recall they've ever done that.
I don't think they have.
C C W D is supposed to do that?
Yes.
Probably C P U D also.
All, all special districts.
And all the sanitary districts.
All the special districts in the county.
I guess I'm having trouble seeing why we need this at all, because if, if, if you're not extending it to an area where future development is anticipated by the general plan, you've got a problem right off the bat, I mean, how would you be able? Or why would you ever extend it to such an area until you got that little problem fixed, if you're talking about development? This just seems to me, this is kind of overkill here, and unnecessary, and there is the ag problem that isn't covered by this.
How does this fit in with the problem we had earlier this year with the Ladado property up here by the tennis courts? You know, they wanted to do some kind of a split or just something like that, but the water district didn't have any water they could allocate to them?
Well, that's a separate issue where.
But isn't that the same kind of thing?
Not really, no, that, that's a drought-related issue and capacity issue that, that the water district has.
Who, who would get them to extend their system? Does the county do that, or the water district?
I think it has to do with water rights, not, not distribution, I think it has to do with the.
Well, the, the issue with Ladado was based on water rights and the drought restrictions that are imposed, but I, I guess, yes, it's probably unlikely that a district would extend water to an area that's not proposed for development. I, I guess, again, it gets to that issue of the pushing out beyond the existing area of development into the rural area of the county, that, and gets into the, so the growth-inducing impact that infrastructure has.
Let me, let me try this on you, I'm just noodling here, but consistent with my approach from the other direction. If you have this policy statement, development or projects shall not be approved that require, approved outside, beyond the, let's see, shall not be approved be. approved outside of, beyond the, let's see, shall not be approved beyond the extent of existing infrastructure that, let's see, that requires the infrastructure to be extended beyond some reasonable factor." Let's say, that's terrible language. I could do better than that. "Projects shall not be approved that require the unreasonable extension of infrastructure to meet their requirements."
Unreasonable is a tough word.
Yeah, what's reasonable, what's unreasonable?
Okay. The, what would be-
Maybe before you start trying to-
The water district would say, "We just, we can't do it because we don't have the water. We don't have the water for that." Or because it requires some kind of a Caltrans permit, 'cause we're gonna go through the street and they won't give it to us. There could be a number of reasons why it becomes unreasonable or impractical.
You were gonna go a different direction.
Well, this gets to sort of the fundamental policy question of the circle boils down to that. And if, if we agree one way or the other, whether or not we want to encourage growth, support growth within a community area, or whatever we call it, and conversely, not encourage growth outside of that, then some policy language along these lines is probably appropriate. If that's not something that this commission wants to have, then we could just strike this and it doesn't really matter. And it will be a, the extension of infrastructure will be a product of the marketplace. And as projects develop, if it's affordable to extend public water and sewer and it penciled out for the developer, then they're gonna wanna do it. And the policy 2.5 will cover the insurance that those facilities are there for the new development. If however, you know, the prior direction, the direction the plan was going previously, that, no, we do wanna have sort of concrete areas, and we're not going to have development out into the rural areas, then a policy somewhere along the lines of 2.4 is appropriate. And so I think that maybe before we get into the weeds of wordsmithing a policy, we need to discuss whether or not that fundamental issue of constraining development outside of some area is where we want this plan to go, where you want this plan to go.
Well, if you have a land use map, which we will have, that will have all the designations where growth is gonna be allowed and what's gonna be resource production. And we will have specific areas where future development is anticipated by the general plan, like this reads. And according to this, you can go ahead and extend water and sewer and infrastructure to those areas.
Right.
Okay. Now, if you're a landowner and you're not in one of those areas, you're way out with resource production somewhere, how in the world are you gonna get anybody to give you water and sewer and a great big road until you get that general plan designation changed? Isn't this just unnecessary? When they change, if they decide to change the general plan designation so you can develop it, then you would fit within this automatically. If you can't, you're not gonna get anywhere with it anyway. To me, this is just an added layer of sort of superfluous but problematic and maybe troublesome restrictions that is just not necessary.
I, I think personally, I'd like to strike 2.4. You can keep 2.5 in there. But as far as, if you've got somebody that's willing to pay for water, sewer, high-capacity roads, which I, it's gonna be rare if that even comes about.
Right.
Why would we decline that type of an improvement to our county that someone else is gonna be doing the expansion on? I don't, I don't wanna constrain. This is so restrictive that, I mean, it would require a general plan amendment. And if somebody comes in with this and it's outside of our circle and they want to do something like this, I think at that point in time on that four times a year when you can do a general plan amendment, it should be taken on a case-by-case basis, not just flat out say, "It's not happening."
I think it's an important policy to keep, but the clock is ticking here today. So I think I'd like to continue this discussion. I don't think we're gonna wrap it up today.
I think we might.
I don't know that we are going to, because I think we're... I guess you could try, but I do have to leave here at five. Five o'clock. That includes public comment, director's report, all of that. But I think it's also, Peter asked a question that I think he's looking an answer for, and that is sort of the fundamental direction that this general plan update has been going, which is a, having a pattern of more densely populated urban areas, whether we call those communities, community planning areas. Is supporting growth in those areas alleviating pressure on areas that are resource production.
We have language, and we just went through some, that says, "We're gonna encourage, you know, growth within the-"
Right.
-existing community." We have that. What Lisa is suggesting, I think it's quite well taken, is if somebody comes along, if, we don't know, if somebody comes along and they've got some terrific idea for a project that's outside this community center, and they're willing to pay through the nose for all of the infrastructure it would take to serve that, then on a case-by-case basis, why wouldn't we listen, why wouldn't we say, "We'll listen to you"? Why wouldn't we do that? That's all she's saying, and that's, and that makes sense to me. And I, I think this precludes that kind of common sense, "We'll listen to it" approach.
Even if it was, say, it was just manufacturing, say, we had a large corporation, God, I wish, like Amazon, that said, "We're going to put in a manufacturing area, we're gonna put in sewer, we're gonna put in water and high-capacity roads outside of our circle." This says no. It's not something I even think we should be considering in this statement.
Right.
And that, that should be, if it's struck and it says point-blank, "Adequate infrastructure facilities and public services," because the way the circle's drawn right now, we are gonna be encouraging everybody to stay in that circle. I mean, it's not like they're gonna go outside of it in big hurry, 'cause that ain't gonna happen. There's no infrastructure for it now. But I don't wanna restrict the possibility of something wonderful and jobs coming to our area.
So then the, all of the people have to drive to those jobs, they're getting in their car, they're getting on the highway, they go in, you know, driving down-
You bet. And they're making money and they're paying taxes and they're buying houses and they're supporting our county and that infrastructure, you bet.
Versus having that same industry somewhere in or near an area that already has services.
But manufacturing wouldn't do that. They're not gonna build inner city.
No, you just said there could be. There could be that, you know.
If they built inner city, everyone's gonna scream about noise.
I'm not talking about inner city. I'm talking about, you know, we don't, we have a lot of outer cities too. I mean, that are, you know, that, one, you'd never have a manufacturing facility like that in one of these historic towns. It's gonna have to go to, to one of the bigger communities that have hopefully the land in or around, and the services, including the housing and the restaurants and all of those things, those people, those employees are gonna need.
Those things don't happen first. I mean-
The jobs come, then the infrastructure and the restaurants and the schools.
Right, and so-
They follow.
They do follow, but industry is never gonna locate here if there aren't, if there isn't services at hospitals and, and restaurants and-
I don't believe that. I believe that industry will never come here with statements like this that say, "You're not doing it." I just, I think that that needs to be struck, and I think we stick with 2.5. That's just my personal opinion.
And I repeat that I think 2.5 covers the bases there. And to get to, to answer Mr. Maurer's question, I think Lisa answered it. We ought to be able to consider projects on a case-by-case basis when people are willing to pay the freight of doing the extensions. We're not paying for it. We never paid for it.
Well, we will pay for it.
How?
Well, just by the, having that development where it is and the impacts that it has and on our movement, quality of life, et cetera.
Oh, well-
We're moving anyway. Everyone brings that up and says-
This clock-
You know what, just to move this along, I mean, why don't we hear from the public? Since we're gonna be needing to do that.
Excellent idea.
Okay.
Come on up, Al.
All right. Thank you, Fawn. And I understand your feelings about the environment, and there's a lot of people that agree with you. And, and I used to feel that way too. But when you evaluate all the things about the human condition, it would be great if we're on bicycles or footpaths and didn't have to go in automobiles. And the problem is, I really like my Subaru and I enjoy driving it, so it makes it more difficult for me to be an advocate of not having roads and cars and all these modern technological things. I agree with the direction this is going. The, Peter's also quite accurate that by deleting this paragraph, there is a possibility of a Barnes and Noble or some, some sort of development, maybe an educational institution that would like to be within the hills, not in, in town, so to speak. And that, and by having wording such as this, that would just cut them off if they, they won't try to fight us in court to get our general plan changed so that it could be more flexible. But in the general plan that you've already done, you've encouraged people to go to the, to the community centers. You don't have to prohibit infrastructure, prohibit roads and have that kind of wording. That's onerous. And I think by deleting this, you're not gonna hurt the general plan in any way. Thank you.
Thank you, Al.
Anyone else?
Colleen Platt. I just wanna put my two cents worth in, as I do support the policies to direct growth into the areas that we decided that growth should be. If we just let the marketplace grow, let things happen, we're gonna end up with the problems that we have now. We can't afford to send the police and the fire out to all of these areas. You know, if we just keep doing the sleep proud stuff, we're kind of defeating the whole purpose here. And if we, if we have a purpose to the general plan, we need policies to support it. So I support that policy, so I'd like to see it stay. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob?
Hi. I-
Bob Guaramendi for the record. Go ahead.
Hi, Bob Guaramendi. Kelly's point about agricultural water, extending that, I think is a very good point. I know that there's also concern about those that don't wanna see development to see, to restrict agricultural water, 'cause oftentimes, as we see in the other irrigation districts in the valley, they serve communities as well. I, as far as the language itself, I think Mr. Maurer stated a point that as long as, you know, whether or not there's going to be some kind of control, if you will, on where people are going to build or not. You know, there's gonna be resource production lands, how much, I guess, will be debated and where, and I understand that. But the idea is, is the commission ready to accept the fact that the general plan plans in a very general way, hopefully, but allows for those things that the community has, has already addressed in most cases? So I think there's a fundamental question here, and I sense the commission going back and forth with that. And oftentimes, they're one side, you're one side, and then the other. But is there going to be planned growth? And is that growth going to be such that it, as I stated earlier, protects other, other rights out there or other possibilities for growth in there? I mean, when you think of what agricultural possibilities there are, it's, it's almost endless in this county. And so when we think of growth, I think of it in that sense. And I think of it creating jobs, are there gonna be high-paying jobs like Silicon Valley? Uh, no, they won't be. But will they be livable wages? Hopefully, they would. And, and I see the potential, we keep talking about bringing in industry, there, there's going to be zones or land use designations in this county for industry that have the infrastructure or the ability to take it. But anyway, I think there's some fundamental question, that fundamental question that Mr. Maurer brought up is something that, and maybe that's why Fawn said, "Are we gonna get through this right now?" 'Cause that's sort of where this commission seems to be at. It's battling the private property rights and controlling growth at the same time determining, determining that. So anyway, I agree with Kelly in what you said as specific to that one section. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Keith Talia again. In regards to Mr. Tuno's statement about, "We shouldn't limit the extension of water and sewer lines." Somebody wanted to pay for them, and I think he's right. I spent many, many years on the San Andreas Sanitary District, and we had a policy where if that happened, we put the line in, took their money, and then gave them back. Depending on how much revenue the line generated, gave them back a portion of their expense each year. I know CPUD had the same policy. So you might wanna check with them and get the proper language, and I'm sure CCWD probably has it by now. And I'd like to compliment all of you for your studious hours that you spend here. I know it's been taxing on me, but it's more taxing on you. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Talia. All right. So, what's the plan?
Well, it looks like 2.4 is the subject. And maybe I'm not getting this, but if you have somebody who wants to have a school or whatever, that is outside an area that the general plan designation would permit. If it's inside, 2.4 is, doesn't do anything anyway. All right, so it's outside. Now, to make that happen, that person has to get a general plan amendment. Once the person does that, 2.4 doesn't stand in the way anymore at all.
But I think the point is, they probably wouldn't get a general plan amendment with 2.4.
Say again, please?
They wouldn't get a general plan amendment with 2.4, right? I mean, they could ask for it.
No, no, it says, "Where future development is anticipated by the general plan is reflected in the general plan land use designation."
Right.
They could go get that changed.
Well, if, now, run that by me again? They could get what, they could get a general plan-
They could get the general plan land use designation for that property changed.
Changed to-
Where does it say that?
To, I mean, they can't move their, they can't move their prop-
You can have a general plan amendment, right?
Yeah, but they can't move their property closer to a town.
But you can have four general plan amendments a year.
Right.
Okay. Let's, they get bundled up, however they do it. The person who wants to do this comes in and says, "I have this project out here."
So let's say it's a school, again.
Yeah. It's on our, "I wanna have this really nifty school."
Right.
Maybe a college.
Right.
Better yet. But it's resource production.
Right.
And I know that you can't extend, you can't get me water and sewer and so forth. Of course, I can't do this anyway when it's resource production.
Right.
So I need to get a general plan amendment that makes-
So I need to get a general plan amendment that makes, that, that fits with a designation that permits me to build our school, right?
Education or something, public facilities, yes.
So he gets that.
Right.
Once he gets that, 2.4 allows this to happen.
No, because you're...
Yes, because it's now, it's...
Yes, because now it's in an area where-
Now it's anticipated.
Where it's anticipated.
Okay, so if you've got a couple of people over here, and a couple of people over there, and we're arguing over the verbiage, the verbiage isn't right, we've been down this road before, so something needs to be changed, so that it's clear.
I see, I see your point, Kelly, I mean, I just got that, so, I mean, what, what about that? I mean, it's like if...
So I, I think the point was what you were about to get to, Fawn, was that the likely, likelihood of that general plan amendment being approved would be constrained by that policy.
Yep, there you go.
Right.
So this policy would say, "No, we don't think it's appropriate to amend that general plan to whatever the use is you're proposing," because that means the extension of public water and public sewer and a road system out there, and we don't want to extend that out there because of the cost of maintaining that, and the growth-inducing impacts that that might have.
Correct. Now, the flip side of that is that...
It's late.
I know, I had it, I had it, I had the perfect statement here.
Let me try again.
The flip side is that without 2.4, the person who wants to do this project that Mr. Rooster suggested, it's not like they, it's not like the hurdles have been eliminated. The, the hurdles are still considerable, and they, and, and it may or may not fly based upon other factors and other input, but what he's saying, and what I agree with him in, is that we shouldn't have a policy of, that precludes the possibility of that happening. There are enough hurdles, even without this, that makes those kinds of projects rare, rarely that would, would it happen, so there's nothing to fear that our lifestyle is going to be impeded by, by these, by such a possibility, but you had a point.
The fellow, the developer comes in of this college, and he comes to the board of supervisors, and he says, "I want to build this college, okay? I want to build it on resource production land. I need a general plan amendment to public facilities." That's what he says, right? And the board looks at it and says, "That's a good idea, we like it. You have your general plan amendment, okay? So far, so good." Now, is anybody going to be able to say that, "Oh, you can't get water or sewer, or a high-capacity road to it because of 2.4"? How could they? Because now, this development is, is anticipated by the general plan.
Right, but what Peter's saying is that when they came to ask for the general plan amendment, you would look back and go, "Whoa, but wait, no, this is like, this is against our policy. We can't give you your general plan amendment, because it goes against our policy of extending, because we know there's going to be people there, and there's going to be flushing a toilet, so, no, we know, that, that means it's going to force the extension of those, even if you're willing to pay for it, and we're not, that's, that's against...
Okay, if we're going to do that, then, then we need to change the language, to something like, "We're in areas where future development is anticipated, the general plan is reflected in the general plan land use designation, as of X date, with no amendments allowed." If that's what you want to do, do it.
Are we at an impasse?
Well, I think, again, you know, I, there's, I, I really do have to leave at five. I don't know, I mean, would it, I mean, we're coming back to this anyway, I don't know that, I mean, that we just think on it, sit on it?
Well...
Unless you think you-
Let's argue for another five minutes.
All right, because then we do have public comment period again.
And I think you're going to accommodate that.
Okay.
Okay. Eliminating 2.4 does not open any floodgate, okay? It just allows for the possibility that a project would be proposed that is very desirable to the county, that no one even thought of before, very desirable, and the proponent, the applicant, is willing to pay the freight to make it happen. Still has to jump through all the hoops it would otherwise have to have jumped through.
So rather than like, just trashing the whole thing, maybe there's a way, maybe there's a way to rework this.
And, well, to continue the point I just made, I think it's Kelly's point, that the applicant, having done that, would fit within 2.4 anyway, so 2.4 becomes unnecessary for that purpose. What we're, what we're both concerned with, and I think, I'm speaking for Lisa on this too, is that the existence of 2.4 states as a policy, "We don't want that," and we don't know what we're not, we don't know what, right now, what we're saying we don't even, we don't want. The, the universe of possibilities, how can we say that? We're precluding a brilliant idea from being even considered by policy, and by eliminating this policy, we are not inviting, the sky is not going to fall, we are, it's not a floodgate.
So because of Peter's comments earlier, that, you know, we need to be thinking about what direction we're really going in here, are we saying, "Great, we've opened the floodgates, the circle's now opened up to one great big triangle in the shape of Calaveras County," or are we staying within our circle, and maybe Fawn is right, and we stop right here today, we all go home, get some rest, read it over, and come back at our next meeting?
I don't have a problem doing that.
I don't have it, but I think we're there, as far as being able to make a decision, but that's, maybe I'm just speaking for myself.
And I'm thinking that maybe there'd be, maybe some, rather than just tossing or keeping something in between, but I don't know, that I have the bandwidth right now in terms of, you know, tired, and, and I have to leave, and we have public comment, and it's, I mean, we're, it's not like this is it, and we're done.
No.
I know, we have to come back anyway.
Agreed.
So let's, I, I, I'm going to say that we go ahead and go to public comment, if you all are good with that.
I'm fine.
Okay. Public comment period again.
You have one minute.
Yeah.
Al Segala, Taxpayer Association, I really appreciate the work you've been doing, and I think it's probably the first time in maybe history that the Planning Commission has expressed so much interest in protecting property rights and, and our economy, and so even though you're struggling with this one, there's been a lot that you have accomplished, and I, I think the taxpayers appreciate that, and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Bob Garamendi. One of the problems, I think, with the process is you're looking at an element, one element at a time, and there's elements out ahead of you, resource production element as an example, since you're using the resource production lands as an example, that have, not, that they're going to be agreed to or accepted, but have recommended findings for just what the scenario that Kelly described. There's a list of findings that it's, it doesn't cut things off at the knees, but these are the things that have to be considered when you go out, and if you're going to take resource production out of, out of, out of production, and so I, I, I think it's a little disservice, maybe to you as the, as the commission, to have this out in front of you, and not really maybe knowing that it's out there, and you're going to be addressing it, coming down the road, and then coming back and making it consistent with where you're at today. It's a tough, a tough job, a tough thing to do, but anyway, I just want you to know that the resource production element that was submitted to the board in 2011 had some findings, had the findings to do with public facilities, as well as any discretionary development on resource production lands, and I think it would take under consideration, it's not specific to having that water out there, but it takes into consideration the impact that would have on the bigger picture of the resource production lands. So, it's out there, there's this issue you're discussing today.
The interrelationships, yeah.
Very much so, and, and you're going to be coming up against it again, and I hear you sort of going around and around now, and it's going to be going around.
So maybe this is a good heads-up, maybe we'll just take a look and see what's in resource production, prior to our next meeting.
Well, it, it, it's only specific to resource production lands-
Yeah.
-and to any kind of general plan amendment that would be required to, to convert it to some other use.
One of the jobs, Bob, that Peter has, is sort of like cleanup batter, after the whole process is over with, he has to go back through and, and make sure that everything that we've done has internal consistency, so if something we do, he flags it for internal...
I'm just thinking that, I, I listened to your discussion, and I'm thinking, "Boy, here, you know, this thing's sitting out there, you're talking about findings, you're talking about some really specific restrictive thing that, you know, in that policy," and again, again, on resource production lands, we tried to address that, the YAD coalition when, when we were working on that, and we worked hand-in-hand with six or seven planning directors and, and other groups, and it's just something I want you to be aware of, that there's some findings in that, at least they were, and I know in our recommendations, we, we recommended putting them back in, that address just what you're discussing, but in a much more, I don't know, maybe it's more acceptable, maybe it isn't, but it's a, it's a series of findings, five or six findings, that the board would be to find on to, to make a general plan amendment.
And maybe resource production was maybe not the best example, taking resource production land for the, it could have been rural residential, could have been anything that's, that requires a change in the general plan, and an extension of infrastructure beyond where it is now.
And I imagine those findings could apply, could apply to other land use designations as well. We just, we were focused on resource production lands, and, and that, that's where we stopped, and we didn't really even get involved with the community plans as well, because they're different animals, and, but those findings may be something that you move along, could be something to be applied across the board, I mean, that's up to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Real briefly, I know you want to go. Colleen Platt, I, I agree with both Lisa and Fawn, I think this is a very complicated discussion at the very end of, end of a very long day, and this is kind of a narrow, narrow focus on infrastructure, but it has huge implications, the whole direction of what you're going, and what Peter's asking you to think about is very big, and then I would encourage you to come back and reconsider this, and maybe with fresh minds and fresh faces, and more people in the audience to hear this discussion that are interested, so, yeah, please, bring it back, thanks.
Thank you.
Speaking of which, next week?
Well, next, now, here's the situation, next week is, I'm, I won't be here, I, I have to be out of town for business, so there's a couple of options, one is you guys could proceed without me, or wait and not have a meeting next week, till the following meeting, where I could join you. You can talk amongst yourselves.
Well, I think if, if one person is, is absent, and it's one of those meetings where we just have a few applications to consider, that's one thing, but I think in the case of the general plan discussions, I think everybody needs to be here, even you.
Thank you.
I agree.
Okay, well, thank you very much, because I really wanted to.
Okay, so we don't have a, we, we don't have any fill-in subject matter?
Nothing that we've agendized for next week, it's just the general plan, that was one of the, the off-meetings, so we'll, I don't think we have a whole lot on the agenda for the 22nd.
There may not be anything.
So we may-
Except for this.
There-
Or no, it's, is it the 20th?
22nd is our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Yes, okay, okay.
There may be one or two minor items, and then we'll get back into the general plan.
On this, okay.
On this one, and we'll-
And thank you very much, because I really wanted to-
The 22nd is our next meeting.
Yes.
Yes.
It is this, it is this plus a couple of-
There may be one or two other items, I don't know what we have on the agenda at this point, I'm, I'm going to have here.
If those are small items, that, you know, housekeeping issues or something, I think we ought to put them at the head of the agenda, otherwise-
Oh, sure.
Yes.
We've got a full meeting here, and they'll never get heard.
Right. Now, also, would you anticipate that we might, I mean, I would think we're getting close to finishing land use, that you would also, we, we might have circulation on that 22nd as well?
Oh, no.
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 We have four ag, ag preserve items, but those are fairly, should be fairly routine.
Those tend to go quickly.
Yeah, and that's, that's what we have for that agenda, so, yeah, we'll take care of those first, and then we'll dive into the general plan, and take a bunch-
Back into the land use.
Back into land use, right where we left off.
So might you have some of the revisions from today?
I will do my best, to see if I can get, get done.
All right.
I don't think I can get all of them done.
All right. Well, no, no pressure.
You've got two weeks.
Yeah. So I guess with that, we're-
I have one week.
One, oh, that's right.
Because I have to get out, if we can advance.
Right. So, we're, we're adjourned, and thank you again for not having a week.
We need to all be together.
Thank you.
I had no reports.
Did you have a report? I didn't think so.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
I could give you guys an update on where we're at with the fire recovery stuff, but-
When does, when does Lou's?
Okay, you, you still need this?
Can you see it?
Yeah.